So, we'd like to bring the meeting to order. Uh, thank you all for coming. Before we start the meeting, just a couple of things. Is number one, uh, you've all heard about coronavirus. So, I, I do want to just encourage everybody to, uh, follow the, the Center for Disease Control Guidelines, which are use hand sanitizer whenever possible. Better yet, wash your hands. Anytime you touch any surface, you could be picking something up that you didn't necessarily bring here. So, when you leave, just remind you to wash your hands or use hand sanitizer then. What we're trying to do here is to keep this, uh, we already have community transmission. And if that isn't a term you've heard, I'll explain it. It's when, uh, somebody contracts the disease and you can't trace it back to a known source like Italy, Iran, or China. So, when that starts happening, then it has a tendency to spread rapidly. So, we're just going to do everything we can to try to keep this under control to protect our citizens here in Sierra Madre. So, with that in mind, again, uh, keep your hands clean. Try to avoid touching your face whenever possible. And please go to the web, the Center for Disease Control website and look at its suggestions for how you can keep you and your loved ones safe. So, having said that, I also just, um, uh, you know, thank everybody for coming. Uh, we know you're, most of you are here to talk about the, the develop, potential development at the monastery site. So, we're asking that you fill out a comment card. And what I'm going to do, when we get to that point, I'm going to call you to the podium and I'll name off a couple of people so that you can line up in advance and we can kind of move through it very quickly. So, with that, uh, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with our pledge of allegiance. Um, Mayor Protem Arizmendi.
If you can all please rise and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. You can all have a seat. I'll be short for my words of inspiration. I'm actually, uh, saying these words in honor of my father-in-law, Phil Alberto Arizmendi II, who just passed this past Sunday. And, um, he, he fought cancer very toughly and very hard. Um, I just want to say thank you to all those medical professionals, those in the hospital, those in hospice, those in palliative care, speech therapists, occupational therapists, visiting nurses, all of those that really helped ease his life, um, in the last few days. And for those of you that are fighting cancer of ha, or have families that are fighting cancer, um, know there are, there's a great medical professional team behind you, but there are a lot of great organizations, people, and hopefully friends and family that can support also. So, in honor of my father-in-law, Phil Alberto Arizmendi II, I'd like to start the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Uh, Mayor, could we, uh, have the city clerk do roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Mayor John Caposha.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rochelle Arizmendi.
Present.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember John Harabedian.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, you have a corps man make conduct city business.
Thank you. Um, okay, approval of meeting agenda?
I'd like to make an amendment. If, if, uh, if I could, I would propose to move the monastery discussion, item number three, uh, under discussion items, to the very front after public comment for items not on the agenda.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, approval of meeting minutes. I did submit a couple of items to the city clerk on things that I caught.
I'll move with those changes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, now I'm going to open it up to public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. So, again, if you're here to talk about, uh, the development at the Modern De La Rosa estate, please hold off. We're going to open it up for public comment at that time. So, right now, does anybody have any comments that they would like to make to the city council of any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close that and, um, we'll now, uh, talk about the monastery. Okay, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so we'll give, um, a presentation and then, uh, open it up for council dialogue, uh, and direction and public comment. So, uh, so everyone knows this is the, the property that we're discussing. The, the entire property, uh, continues up, uh, mountainside, about forty-five or fifty acres. Uh, but for the sake of this discussion, we have the northern part, uh, we're, we're referring to as Modern De La Rosa, and then the southern part, which is about twenty acres shaded in yellow. It's the proposed development. So, I started, uh, this presentation a few days ago and I was working with planning and with legal. We're reviewing the code and we were preparing to talk about, uh, the legal aspect of this, how, uh, the zoning impacts development. And the comments I was getting from residents, uh, were more emotion-based or fear-based. And I don't know that this presentation really addresses that. So, I wanted to open it up by acknowledging, these are legitimate things, uh, that people are saying. Uh, and though I don't, I gue, I'm not giving a presentation with a lot of emotion. I do have a fear component with, uh, this development and that would be an institutional development, um, has an unknown outcome. So, I want to acknowledge these comments upfront. These are what the residents I'm talking to are saying. And then also recognize that we're going to have a much more technical legal discussion. So, uh, the other thing we did is we moved the summary upfront, so we're not going to bury the lead. The monastery has a legal right to develop the property. The city does not have the ability to stop that. In fact, the city has a legal obligation to allow for lawful development. So, the discussion is not as it was previously. It's not if or when the property is developed. The only question is how this development will occur. We are allowing them, uh, to, uh, develop as institutional. That's their right. Uh, we think staff feels, I feel, that a residential development would be much less impactful to the community that's up there. Uh, there's other, other issues we take into account right now. Uh, new state laws, it's a housing crisis laws. They were effective, uh, just this year. And in California, the laws are, are written, uh, but until they're challenged and a judge interprets them, we're really not sure what they mean. Uh, right now, we are unclear if the city even has the ability to rezone the property. So, to the extent that people are afraid there's going to be a vote on a rezoning next week, uh, we don't even know if we can do it under the housing crisis laws at this point. And what the housing crisis laws did is said you can't rezone a property to reduce density. So, institutional use on this size is one of the most dense uses that we have in the city, uh, for potential. And R1 is the least dense. So, housing community development may look at this and say, um, you know, you know, sorry, our, our new laws took effect January 1, we're not going to allow you to rezone them. In addition to that, the city code currently also increases the uncertainty that we have. What the code says on institutional, uh, is that, uh, you have to develop a master plan. And what the master plan is, is essentially a negotiation between the developer and the city. So, the most recent and most applicable one we have is the Kensington specific plan. That was a institutional development that, uh, abutted residential, uh, as well as civic and, and commercial. Uh, and we know this, uh, that at the end of this, Kensington was able to negotiate a deal that provided for allowances greater than what was in the code. So, they actually have reduced setback, uh, greater units, uh, et cetera, and we'll lay that out later. Uh, the other point we want to make, the uses allowed to the property owner under institutional zoning are defined. So, if they come forward and they say, "We want to do community assisted living," that's a use they can do up there. Uh, what we can do to regulate is we can try and limit the impact. We can try and reduce the density or the height. Uh, we have some tools available to us under a conditional use permit or a design review permit, but we can't change their use. So, we're going to go over the defined uses later, too. Remember, this is a summary, so we've seen all the information already. Uh, as we've said, the, the discretionary actions are limited largely to, to two areas. Uh, but the design review permit, uh, for an institutional zone is going to be problematic to apply. Uh, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One we'll go over on the next slide is the history of the city's regulation on this specific property, on the actions that we took in two thousand sixteen. Uh, but also, and I think more compelling, is the size and the location of the property, as well as the zoning and characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. So, you've got a twenty-acre parcel that is surrounded by residential, uh, and a park. Anything institutional that developed there, by definition, is going to be dominating to the neighborhood because it's a use that's out of character. It doesn't conform with the zoning that surrounds it. And a lot of what our design review permit talks to is the nature and character of the neighborhood, not to detract from the village and foothill setting. So, again, it's not to say it can't be applied. Um, it's just going to be more problematic because we, uh, changed the zoning on it. So, the history is prior to nineteen ninety-seven, all residential, single-family. In nineteen ninety-seven, the city creates institutional zoning and it pulled in all sorts of uses like cemeteries and schools, um, as well as Modern De La Rosa. Uh, but at that time, low-density residential was still allowed on the property. In two thousand sixteen, uh, we amended the I-zone to eliminate, eliminate the language I'll show. Um, and we'll say, um, gently, it was a unique, uh, changing of the code. Uh, when we look at the things that we value in Sierra Madre, uh, what we struck out was, um, an institutional zone. Uh, we no longer wanted to have it be eligible for conversion to low-density residential. Uh, and we took away the, the aspirational statement that it was unique, right, and, and to urban areas. So, what that means is at this point, we've rezoned it institutional. And when cities do that, that means we expect institutional development to come, right? We didn't, we rezoned it, we amended the general plan, and what we said is we support institutional zoning on this acreage. So, these are the allowed uses with a, a CUP and a master plan at institutional zone. Hospital, communal residential, assisted living, multi-use field, school, uh, the list goes on and on. This is, that's not inclusive. But when we're talking about a lot size that is twenty acres, these uses become, uh, seriously a real possibility. And if you're sitting up there in, in that part of the neighborhood, I personally would not be excited about a hospital or any type of assisted living, uh, coming in in that area. So, when we talk about, um, the density, R1, uh, and this is all if, uh, for a twenty-acre development. Dwelling units in R1 would be limited to one sixteen. Uh, the height is limited twenty-five feet and lot coverage is forty percent. So, you see, as you move left to right, the density becomes greater. So, in R3, two hundred sixty units, forty-five percent lot coverage. Uh, so that's multifamily. We have a thing called R3H, which is, um, for high density. It's, it's essentially, uh, most common application would be low-income bonus. So, now you're getting up to four hundred units. Uh, the Kensington specific plan, uh, which is assisted living, if we had negotiated that the same way we did on their two-acre development to twenty-acre development, this is where we would have ended up. The two stories was actually limited by Measure V. Um, so, that wasn't decided as part of the master plan negotiation. When we add on institutional, we get a lot of no-limit negotiable, a height of three stories or thirty-three feet. So, when we talk about starting a negotiation for development, which is going to happen, we say that negotiations often end up based on where they start. So, if we're starting a negotiation on density, my preference is to start, uh, with the least number of dwelling units possible that also happen to have the most compatible use and try and move my way down. The institutional development, um, is going to be harder to reduce the density just by the nature of the uses that are allowed. Um, hospital, communal assisted living, uh, as well as the, the idea that the code instructs it to conform, uh, to the, like, topography and neighborhood and, and setting that it sits in. And we're talking about an enormous parcel. They can do a lot with it. So, we're not suggesting that maximum development would happen. We don't think that's practical, but we do think a pretty substantial and dense develop, development would be approved. So, when we talk about residential versus institutional, again, residential reduces allowable, allowable density dramatically. We can negotiate for further reductions. Uh, residential is, is essentially less of everything, right? If you're institutional, it's more disruptive to the neighborhood. You have more traffic, more lighting, more hardscape materials, more height. If you do assisted living up there, right now, the Kensington is the number one, um, user of our, our paramedic services. You get, and I, I'm not trying to say this in a, in a funny way. You're going to get ambulances and, and fire rushing up there four times a day, uh, if it's Kensington-sized. Uh, residential is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. We know this because it was, uh, residential for a long time and low-density residential was, was allowed until just recently. Uh, as I said, it provides a better starting point for negotiation. So, to, to address the comments we heard about, um, the fear, or this is going to happen in, in the dark of night, we have to go through SEQA. This is a long process. Council can't, uh, enter into a development agreement until SEQA is complete. Uh, will require public meetings to be held by all parties involved. And that's in addition to all the meetings at, at the planning commission and the city council. Um, the project, um, once it's submitted, it still has to go to a planning commission for entitlement review. And I'm, I'm seeing the word public a lot to try and reassure people. This has to go through, uh, many boards and commissions, uh, many town halls likely to get feedback, uh, and before it comes back to city council. A lot of this, however, is on the developer, right, to put forth. They're not, we can't require them, uh, to do more meetings than necessary, but, um, in conversations with them, we've asked them, uh, to do that as part of any development agreement that would be signed, so they can get direct feedback from the public. So, a couple of additional considerations as, as we talk through what a high-level agreement would look like. Everything we analyzed was on one twenty-acre development. And one thing we didn't analyze as possible is they could subdivide that property, uh, and do multiple developments of institutional style. Now, they'd still have to go through the process, but now we're talking about not one dense use. We're talking about potentially, um, two or, two or more dense uses. Uh, when we start looking at this, the question, I think this is for council, is what, what's best for the residents, right? Do we want to talk about greater density with smaller homes or less density with larger homes? When we talk about compatible use, again, this is for the council. Do you want institutional development in the neighborhood? Or do you want a residential use that's surrounded by homes? And the last point, I've reviewed a lot of, uh, the staff reports and the meeting minutes from what happened in two thousand sixteen. We've had a lot of conversations. So, we, we're confident lawsuit is likely if resi, if this is disallowed or overly regulated. So, lawsuits aren't inherently scary in, in and of themselves. You want to look at it based on the merits. But the question I always ask before you enter into a lawsuit is what do you win, right? So, if you go to suit over this, what do we win? So, in our case, we go to suit and we say, "You can't use residential development," and we win. They develop institutional, right? It's the use we don't actually want and it's the use the property owner doesn't want. If we go to suit and we lose, they get residential development, which is the development that's more appropriate for the area. So, we have, um, very little positive outcome, uh, for going to lawsuit. So, when we talk about potential concessions, and this would show up in an MOU, um, what we've talked with them about is setting aside a, setting aside and building and funding a three-and-a-half-acre turnkey park. So, we call it turnkey. That means when they turn it over to the city, it's graded, it has playscapes, it has gazebos, it has whatever, um, the community has asked for on it. That's, uh, seventeen-and-a-half percent of the entire development site. It's roughly Sierra Vista Park minus the, uh, ballfields. We also, uh, want them to fund the ongoing park maintenance in perpetuity. So, we don't ever want to spend a penny of, uh, taxpayer dollar to maintain or build the park. In addition to that, we want them to fund select improvements to Bailey Canyon Park, uh, as the parks will be close by or adjacent. Uh, we've asked them to donate the acreage behind the monastery to the city. Uh, it's about forty-five acres. And we asked them to ensure low-demand, environmentally-friendly design, net zero, solar. Uh, we have very strict LID, which is Low-Impact Development Compliance. Uh, and to get, to get to some of these, we're asking them to, um, create funds where we can offset uses in other parts of the city. Uh, additionally, we want them to agree to low-density development of no more than forty-five. So, a third of what's allowed in R1 for a development of that size, which is one thirteen, uh, ten percent of what they could get under R3H and significantly less also than what they would have under institutional, uh, though, uh, there's no, no limit on that in the code. So, what does the city have to give up to get that? We have to provide dedicated staff for plan review. Um, we, we do that anyway. So, that's not a big giveaway on our part. That's, that's something that they will fund, uh, through their fees and we will hire a consultant who will be here when the plan is submitted and will leave after their work is done. Again, no, no dollars coming from taxpayers. We'll fix or freeze application costs at today's established levels. That's actually state law. We're required to do that. So, this is not a big giveaway on our part. Uh, we want to amend the zoning of property to R1 from institutional if housing and community development allows that, uh, or negotiate to R1 standards if a rezon is not allowed. Uh, we need to enter into the development agreement por, portion to vary standards, uh, in lot coverage, square footage of home and setbacks. So, we wanted to try and give a visual of what that could look like before we wrap it up. So, the yellow portion is what would be developed. The green portion is what would be provided to the city as a turnkey park. The blue portion to the right is Bailey Canyon Park, where additional improvements would be funded. And the dark blue portion that goes off the screen is supposed to represent the, the approximately forty-five acres that would also be given to the city for either open space or recreational use. So, with that, uh, myself, uh, the deputy city attorney and planning staffer are happy to answer questions.
Questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
That might be quick. Uh, regarding the potential concessions for the city, can you explain what negotiating R1 standards if rezon is not allowed?
So, if, um, HCD Housing Community Development says that we're unable, um, to rezon, we would, uh, negotiate to low-density residential development standards, uh, in an institutional zone. Uh, we know with the way that they're going to build houses, that they're going to ask for, um, larger homes than, uh, larger lot coverage and less of a setback. So, we don't have specific plans. Uh, we haven't seen any drawings. We're not close to that. But when we talk about R1 standards, um, I'm sorry I turned the presentation off. They, they would want variances, uh, from total square footage and from, uh, likely from lot coverage and setbacks.
Okay, so, so we do have the, the right to do that. If it's an institutional zone, we can continue to negotiate for those standards?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question I had was regarding that, um, that slide nine. I think that's an extremely important slide with a comparison of different zonings. Uh, I'm not familiar with R3H. What is R3H and co, uh, and how does that compare to R3?
I'll, I'll move to the slide. Uh, R3H is R3, it's multifamily, high-density. Um, essentially, what the state did is allow, and what the city has done, is allowed for a density bonus for low-income housing. That's, that's the most common application of it, though there, there's other applications. So, if a developer wanted to develop a twenty-acre site, uh, here with multifamily ho, homes, they would be allowed two hundred sixty units. If they incorporated low-income units into that, which they have the right to do under state law and we give a bonus for in our city code, they could go up to four hundred units.
So, in those twenty acres, you can have four hundred units if we're R3H.
Uh, that's correct, yes.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Uh, just a couple. And then, I don't know if the, um, representatives of Modern De La Rosa are here, but, uh, if you can't answer it, maybe they can. But I think, um, you know, one of the questions is always, you know, why do they have to develop it? Or what is the motivation? And, um, I think that's been communicated to us, but it might be helpful for the public just to know why now and why it's going to develop it.
I'm not sure if there's representatives here. If there are, we'll give them the opportunity to answer that. If not, I can try and paraphrase. So, I see a hand up.
It's okay, maybe, maybe just call, yeah, maybe we can just have the city.
So, the, essentially, the, the paraphrase of it is, um, this is, uh, provincial operation. They have multiple sites. They have multiple retreats, um, and they fund missions all over the world. And, uh, Sierra Madre is one of the few, uh, properties that are profitable with regards to, um, the retreats, which is their mission. So, they don't want to decommission that. They want to continue the use. But to fund their other operations in other countries, and this one as well, to be fair, they need to monetize. they need to monetize the, they call it the Meadows area, to send that back to the provincial headquarters, I guess, in Chicago.
And so they do want to continue to run the monastery as a retreat house, and their current use would stay the same?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other question, I guess, is, to the extent that they are interested in institutional, I don't know if the econo, what, to your knowledge, is the economics better for them if it's institutional or residential?
So there's two ways you can look at that. From a straight sale point, if you're selling 20 acres, the highest and best use for the sale is going to be residential. Institutional would be second as far as a straight sale. From a monastery stand, or a monastery, monetary standpoint, they could operate assisted living home and receive income in perpetuity. So from the long term, institutional could potentially be more profitable, but it's also more disruptive, which is why we don't prefer it, and I'm assuming that's why they don't want to go down that route either.
Okay.
Just wanted to, I see the R3H is kind of like worst-case scenario, right, for residential, R1, or residential, but what about the worst-case scenario for institutional? Is it 820?
So the...
What's the worst-case scenario there?
It's one of the things when we say our city code increases the uncertainty about the outcome. In R1, we can calculate the total maximum units they can get in the density because we have it limited by code. In institutional, it does not say that. It says you need to enter into a master plan, and what that means is you're going to negotiate on things, and you're going to try, the benefit of a master plan is you get a development that's appropriate for the site. That's the purpose of it. But when you're talking about a 20-acre site that's surrounded by residential, if we applied the same concepts and precedent that we applied to the Kensington, then they would be able to develop a 960,000-square-foot, three-story assisted living facility. And again, we don't think that's a probable outcome.
How many units would that include?
It's negotiable. So likely, they're going to bump up into potential limits by state law, not what we're limiting them to. But the idea is the institutional development in our code is a less certain outcome, but there's really not an outcome where it's less dense or less disruptive than R1. So when we talk about entering into a master plan, one of the things we would do is we would say, what similarly situated properties do we have? And we don't have anything that's 20 acres, which is one of the reasons the rezon in 2016 was a little bit surprising because it only applied to one property. But we would look at Kensington as a guidepost and say, well, what did we allow there, and how did it work? How did it fit in? And we'd be reminded that it's a budding residential on one side and Civic on the other side, so though it's 1.8 acres, not 20, we would say that that use appears to be compatible with the neighborhood. 20 acres, it would be more difficult to limit the density by saying that your selected use doesn't conform to the neighborhood, even though we know that it doesn't, because they can point to the 2016 change in the institutional zone that said the city, this is what the city values. You've amended your general plan to allow for institutional development for only one property in the entire city. So they've got a very strong argument that that's what we want up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for, again, on your chart, development standards by zoning, R1 with our current zoning, we can build up to 106, it's possible that 116 houses could be built, dwelling units on that site.
So doing a specific site plan, that number may vary a little because you'd have to add roads, right? We don't know where they'd widen the roads at, we don't know some things. So all we're doing is basically a straight calculation of what's allowed in R1 by 20 acres, not trying to take into account that some of it is going to have to be access points. So without a plan, we're trying to give a conceptual level of what could happen while also verbally stating where the max, maximum development is unlikely, because you'd have to have a perfectly square, perfectly flat piece of land that you could run utilities through and roads and everything.
Okay, but it's certainly somewhere between the 45 that you mentioned in your negotiations and the 116 that you've limited here.
It would be very close to that.
Well, yeah, and we'd be subtracting out the 17% that's set aside for a park right now that...
So we have assumed that if they're developing R1 without negotiation, that we've become adverse, so this does not include the park, because under that situation, they're not going to provide a park to the city. They're going to develop likely as densely as they are allowed to under code.
Yeah. You know, just another question about the current law that went into effect in January about ADUs, that we're basically just following the state guidelines. Our current code has been set aside until we get direction from HDC on this one, but, I mean, essentially, you can build two dwelling units, a regular ADU plus a junior ADU on a residential lot. Is that constrained at all by lot coverage? I mean, if you had, you know, our current R1 standards are 40% lot coverage, and say, you know, we had laws that didn't constrain that, say, like they had in Arcadia, where as long as you met setbacks, you could build anything you wanted on there. With the 40% lot coverage, does that allow you, or say you had 80% lot coverage, would that constrain the number of ADUs that you could build on the property?
So I'm going to let the deputy city attorney take first crack at this.
Right, thank you for the question, Mayor. The real constraint for ADUs are setbacks and height. And if the proposed ADU is at least 850 square feet and meets the setback, the four-foot side and yard setback requirements and the 16-foot height limit, then we, the city cannot prevent it from being built. And it's the same for JADUs. Those setback requirements are different because JADUs are part of the house, they can't be detached, unlike an ADU. But to answer your question, no, the city cannot prevent their construction.
Yeah, okay, so that's an important point when we're talking about how many units can be built on there, because if they were allowed the full R1 standards of up to a maximum of 116, you could potentially have triple that number of people up there. So by lowering the number of lots in a negotiation, that limits how much potential traffic goes up and down the, you know, the access points into the development as well, and aside from, set aside for the park, that's advantageous too, for that reason, just to limit the impact on the surrounding community.
I think that's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to open it up for public comment, so I'm going to call names from the cards here. Can you pass that along? I do want to say too is, okay, great, these are going to be called in order of submission. Now, I do want to just say, I should say another comment about how we got to this point too, because, I mean, I had some discussions with the members of the Preserve Sierra Madre, and at one point, I mean, we were in negotiations to actually buy the 20 acres. And that came about, we authorized the city manager to pursue that because, you know, just thinking out of the box, I thought maybe there was a chance that we could buy that property. But my intent was, when I proposed it, is maybe we could combine it with the library ballot measure that's going to go on. But now that we see, I can't disclose what the number that we tentatively agreed to with the monastery, but when you add that to what they are proposing for the library, it becomes prohibitively expensive, and my feeling is that after talking to some people, that was going to kill both deals and leave us right back at ground zero. I think the library board didn't want to take a chance with that because they jumped ahead and said, well, we're going to just submit the ballot proposition for the library themselves. So that wasn't going to work. And besides meeting, I was involved in some of the negotiations with our city manager, and even though everybody thought this would be a great idea if the city could buy it, the folks at the monastery, they wanted a Plan B to say, if it doesn't pass, they didn't want to be back to square one because a lot of time would go by and there's going to be a lot of expense associated with putting that on the ballot. So we started to negotiate a Plan B, and we wanted something that was pretty good in case it fails, that there'd be something really good for us. And walking out of the meeting, all of a sudden, it occurred to me that Plan B might be better than Plan A. So voters might actually say, no, I like the fallback plan better than I like paying taxes, additional taxes to buy the property. So that became problematic. If we didn't negotiate a good Plan B, you'd have a really bad Plan B, and it might fail, and you're stuck with a bad Plan B. So that led us to where we are now, and again, the intent always was with the monastery because they kept in touch with Gabe over the years while the moratorium was on, that they had an intention to monetize this property, even though you didn't hear much about it, but this was going on behind the scenes. So we gave it a really good effort to try to find a solution, and this, by the way, what's being presented today is not the solution. So we're here, we're initiating it by bringing it out to the public. This is a very transparent process, unlike some of the comments that our city manager put up there, that this is being done in the dark of the night. That's not the case at all. This is the first opportunity all of you have to weigh in on this. And I'm going to say, when you're, when you come to the podium and you address the council, we're asking for your help. It doesn't help us to say, I want the property to stay the way it is. What would be helpful to us is if you give us some new ideas or nuances that can help us to negotiate what is in the best interest of the city of Sierra Madre, not necessarily for the people that live adjacent to the property, but for the 11,000 people that live here and pay taxes in this town and enjoy the benefits of what our city government provides for them. So again, I'll ask you, and again, a reminder, you have the right to say whatever you want. We're going to constrain it to three minutes to keep the meeting orderly, but it would be really helpful if you would give us ideas rather than just say that I don't like what's going on here. So with that, I'm going to call the first three names, and if you could, if you could get in line so that we're not waiting for one person to finish, that the next person vacates their seat and comes up, so line up behind the podium so that we can move along very quickly. So the first three in order are Joseph Sanders, Ed Raschen, I can't really read the writing here, and Father Bruno de Souza. So with those three, could you please go ahead and give us your comments? Three minutes, please, and we'll try to warn you when you get close.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, for the, if they say their name, what city they live in, and then they can make their comments, please.
Okay, please do.
Okay, my name is Joe Sanders, and I'm a resident of Pasadena. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Joe Sanders, I'm a past chairman of the Board of Directors of Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. I have been asked to read the following statement into the record of tonight's council meeting, on behalf of Cameron Thornton, another past president of our board and public spokesperson for the development efforts at Madre de la Rosa. Mr. Thornton is unable to be present tonight. Mr. Mayor and council members, I truly wish I was present tonight, making this statement directly to you and the citizens of Sierra Madre. I have been involved as a lay passionist at Madre de la Rosa for over five decades, and unfortunately, I have a family conflict that precludes my attendance tonight. I would like to first thank city manager, Mr. Gabe England. Since becoming city manager a few years ago, we have always found Mr. England to be very transparent and forthright about all matters at City Hall. He is a true public servant who cares about all citizens who call Sierra Madre home. Thank you, Mr. England. As I have previously shared before this body, the Passionists of Holy Cross Province, who own Madre de la Rosa, made a decision to sell and develop a portion of their property back in 2007. Since being given this directive, the Retreat Center's Board of Directors has worked on evaluating this vacant property in order to raise funds for the province in a manner that will not impact our retreats. We have worked on this property for all of those years since 2007, and since then, the need for funds at the province level has increased over these years to support our ministries across America and internationally, and care for our priests and brothers. When the city implemented the water moratorium on July 8, 2014, put our plans for residential development on hold. During the period the water moratorium was in place, the board continued to evaluate various institutional uses that would be permitted on the property. As you are aware, we had extensive talks with the city manager about the city purchasing the meadows while the water moratorium was in place. These talks led to the mutual conclusion that a city purchase was not a viable alternative. We have also maintained open dialogue with the city manager about the different alternatives we have considered and evaluated over the past 12 or 13 years. Based on our conversations with the city manager, the province and Board of Directors desire to enter into an agreement with the city to sell the meadow to a home builder for the purpose of creating a new housing development on our property. I pledge that our Board of Directors will work with the city, our home builder, and residents throughout the process to ensure that the resulting neighborhood creates a fully-funded city park in an area currently lacking a park, blends with the existing neighborhoods near the property, reflects the village character of Sierra Madre, is designed to conserve water and energy, respects nature and creates parks and paths, meets our commitments to our neighbors, and protects the character and ongoing mission of the Retreat Center. In closing, I hope and pray that everyone understands that Madre de la Rosa is a concerned neighbor, and we are committed to Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, okay. Ed, if you can say your last name, I can't read.
Last name is Ruin.
Ruin, okay.
Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, my name's Ed Ruin, and I'm current chair of the board. My wife works at the Foothill Home Care Partners just down the street. Dr. Joe's been our dentist for years, and my youngest daughter became a budding artist at the Renaissance Art Studio. So we love Sierra Madre. I became a volunteer only recently, and over the last several years have become more involved at Madre de la Rosa. As you know, this has been a 13-year journey, and the possible uses are exciting, and it's gratifying to be here tonight in front of the community, in front of you, in an open forum, to really discuss the possibilities. At the same time, we all recognize that tonight's just a first step, and there's a lot of work as everyone at the front of the room mentioned. Most importantly will be an environmental impact report, which will outline the impact of this development on the community. And experts will put that together, and it'll be transparent, and everyone will be able to see it. There have been some concerns expressed on Sierra Madre, California Facebook about Sunnyside can't handle the traffic, Carter's going to be a freeway, things of that nature. You can understand those types of concerns, but I think the best avenue would be to let the experts analyze what is put forth. And until it's put forth by the developer in an application to the city, right now it's conversation, but that ultimately will happen. As you know, and as you discussed, the current zoning is institutional, but the board, the Holy Cross Province in Chicago, and the leadership, they don't want institutional zoning. They do not want a school or a large healthcare facility. In this particular case, their interests are aligned with their neighbors. They want to be able to maintain the tranquility of the Retreat Center and the holiness of the environment, and institutional action is incongruent with that. But at the same time, that desire is consistent with the neighborhood. Over the last 96 years, I think it's fair to say that the Passionists in the Holy Cross Province have been good neighbors to the city of Sierra Madre, and Sierra Madre has been a good neighbor to the Passionists. As we embark on this next step, we're excited about the fact that we think at this time our interests are aligned, and that with careful and thoughtful planning, working closely with the city and the community at large in a transparent fashion, that a project that's meaningful and worthwhile for a former all-American city can be accomplished. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Ruin. Okay, next up is Father Bruno de Souza, then followed by Joe Bros. Okay, next up is Father Bruno de Souza, then followed by Joe Brosig and John Howell. If you've got, if the last two can get in line, please, and be ready to speak quickly, appreciate it. Okay, Father Bruno.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Father Bruno de Souza. I have been a resident of Sierra Madre since November 2012. In September 2019, I was appointed the local superior, the local leader of the Passionist Community Fathers and Brothers at Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. Madre de la Rosa is owned by the Passionists of the Holy Cross Province located in Chicago, which purchased our 88-acre site in 1924. We have been holding religious retreats here since 1926 and intend to keep doing so for many decades to come, just as we will continue to provide a meeting location for various ecumenical groups and recovery programs. I consider myself a blessing to be part of the community and staff at Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. There is a tremendous grace in witnessing how God continues to work in people's lives, inviting them to a deeper relationship with Him. I hope the community understands that if this proposal moves forward, as we pray it will, all the money is raised from the sale of this parcel will go back to the Holy Cross Province where it will be put to very good use. Much will be used to support our ministry domestically and internationally. And it will also be used for the care of our senior religious today and into the future, those priests and brothers who have devoted their lives to service both at Madre de la Rosa and elsewhere in the United States and abroad. I would like to thank our city manager, Mr. Gabe England, and the city council for putting this matter on your agenda this evening and for the city's interest in considering a development proposal for Madre de la Rosa. Should this move forward, we will be hap, we will happily work with the community to ensure that we have responded well and sensitively to our longtime neighbors in Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Father Bruno. Okay, John Brosig?
John Brosio, Robert.
Yeah, Brosio, okay, yes.
I can be Joe Brosid if you want.
Then John Howell follows him and then Melinda Howell after that.
Oh, hi. My name's John Brosio. I'm a homeowner in Sierra Madre, up on Sunnyside, along with Linda back there in the corner. And ironically, my uncle is a Passionist who I guess was at times even stationed up the street. Brother Carl, if that rings a bell with anyone. First of all, thank you for your presentation, the thoroughness and openness of it because it made a lot of my points moot, wonderfully so. And, and forgive my, can we ask, can I ask questions at this moment or is it just only speaker?
You can, you can ask questions, we'll answer
Okay.
Some of the questions as appropriate
Okay, just
At the end of all the comments.
Yeah, just two thoughts. I think on the heels of what, of what you presented, the only idea that comes to mind right now, however ill-informed, is that if there's a certain dollar figure that the monastery is getting, it would be nice if the city did have an avenue to look at it and go, well, we can't pay that whole thing, but we can get this much and therefore secure that much of the property. I don't know if there's parameters that allow for that. You know, especially if it exceeds the, what would otherwise be designated for a park and perhaps, you know, increase that. And I, oh, I noticed on one slide, it said something about, you know, slightly more density with a certain number of homes or maybe less density with larger homes and more affluent property. I guess my question is, is there, is there a way to lean one way or the other, are people looking into that, you know, getting, I saw that up there and I'm like, well, I just saw it as two options and just haven't heard about what people are doing to lean one way or the other and look forward to, forward to seeing that.
Yeah.
Anyway, the rest of everything was answered.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Brosio.
My name is John Howell. Well, I live in Pasadena. I grew up in Sierra Madre, I grew up on Crestvale Drive, which is right below the monastery. And my sister and I still own a house that my father, a local architect, designed in I really appreciate your asking for ideas for a solution that's a win-win for everyone. And I wonder if you have considered seeking financing from the county through Measure A or bond financing through the state through Proposition 68? And I say this from, with some background in dealing with bond financing and county financing. I'm the executive director and general counsel of the Arroyos and Foothills Conservancy, which is a local land trust, and we buy open space. And the way we buy it is to secure community support for our nonprofit, but to pay for the land, we get that money from state agencies or the county. And that's a proved successful model for us in the past and perhaps you've, so my question of you is if you've had, if you've had the opportunity to look at those sources and considered that as a possibility to, to add to your, your pot of funding to buy the property.
Okay. We'll, we'll answer questions after everybody has commented.
Okay. I'm going to leave my card here because what I will offer, we have a grant writer, an in-house grant writer, who's very familiar with, with the range of opportunities. And I would be, I'd be happy to make her available for consultation with you to see if there might be some possibilities.
Okay, great. Appreciate it very much, Mr. Howell. Okay, next is Melinda Howell and then after that, followed by Steve Stafford and Ron Coleman.
Melinda Howell, and I now, since I got married, I live in Seal Beach. I still love my property in Sierra Madre, remember very fondly the carnivals when we were little kid at the Madre de la Rosa. I climbed the big tree and hiked up there. When I hear the term "development," I immediately shudder because what I see going in in development now are very large houses that don't have a lot of architectural integrity. And if it turns out, well, if it turns out that this property is developed residential, is there a way that there can be a requirement that the design and the land or the gardening conform to or be consistent with Sierra Madre now? One of the beautiful things about Sierra Madre is it's a small town and I love coming back here and do quite often. And I just shudder to think of more luxury housing going in when we need housing for the middle class, for people who have less money. And can that be taken into account at the time it's designed? In other words, have some that have, have it available to the middle class and those who don't have the money instead of more luxury housing? One of the things I was also wondering about, whether it would be acceptable or would there, to follow up on my brother, donations? Or has anybody in the city been approached about increasing property taxes? For some things, that can be a good thing, if it's a benefit to the whole city. Yeah, I'm concerned about, I'm, I'm also concerned about ingress egress. Would hate to see Crestvale moved up or have a road there, but that's up to whatever it veins. And I would really love to see it bought by the city, if that's possible, if the funding can happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council.
This is Howell. Next up is Steve Stafford, followed by Ron Coleman.
Mayor Capocia, council members and city staff. This area is where there was an earthquake once, I believe in 2007, it was off the Sierra Madre Fault. That fault coincides with other faults in the area. And I've done a little study after seeing movement in my own town, Temple City, and it's come to Caltech's attention that a lot of those faults are moving. And it goes back to an event in 1837 where there was a very strong quake in Almonte that dropped the land there. It was a push and a shove. And this happens to coincide later on with the Woodyer quake that was a push and a shove and a drop. The area around here is very dangerous because it has a lot of faults that we don't even know about. We know about some of them. And the other thing is, I don't want to see a development up here with mellow roofs. I've seen what happens in other towns where a friend of mine lives. If the developer wants to build, he's got to pay the fees for, for police and fire. Why should the city take that on? That's reasonably why a couple of years ago, the city was having financial problems. If the developer wants to build that much, he's got to pay, pay in lieu fees for police, fire and traffic. You know, citizens shouldn't have to take that on when they move in there, except through their property taxes. The other thing is, I don't think if they build this, homeowners association is the right way to, to do it. Homeowners associations in this, in this aspect would cut off, potentially cut off access to other areas. It's not the thing for this development and I have a lot of questions on the development itself that make me wonder if this is going to work. You know, I already saw the photo where they started grading, that shouldn't have even been started, you know? And one question I'd like to know is, has anybody ever, has anybody done an engineering report on the soil and on the earthquake faults that are there? That needs to be done because, you know, we're going to have another earthquake somewhere around here from these faults that are moving. I've seen it, I've seen it north of San Marino High School where the street went, had moved like this, north to south. I've seen other movement that around, south of there, near, near where I live, closer to Almonte, but still in Temple City. And it's obvious what's, what's happening. And I just don't see this development working unless a lot of amendments to it and a lot of requirements that the developer's going to have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Okay, Ron Coleman, followed by Brother John Rockenbach and Jeannie Warlick.
Ron Coleman, 520 Fairview. This is in my backyard. And so I think I'm one of the first people to talk tonight that's really right there. And I have to applaud the presentation. I think you guys, people have asked, answered a lot of questions, but like the mayor said, this is step one of a long dance. There's going to be a lot of stuff. And a lot of these questions are going to be go through and get taken care of with SEQA. And, you know, I totally understand the earthquake because I'm right there at that fault. But building standards today have changed a lot. The main thing I want to talk or mention is, we were down this dance many years ago with one Carter and we had difficulties there. And my rearview mirror is getting a little foggy, but I believe that that cost the city well above $350,000 in litigation and we got nowhere but losing $350,000. So I really hope that we can figure out how to get this done, one way or the other. I love the gentleman that was here with, gave the business card, talking about grants from the state or county. We need to look into that option, but also the way it has been laid out, very clear. My only concern is that, you know, they're going to have to come up with two access points because, you know, let's go back and talk about when we do have our brush fires, it'd be nice to have two ways to get in and out. And that's about it. I'm glad they got the park in there. That'll make it a little less painful. But as Gabe pointed out, they have the right to sell it and if we can limit the impact, all the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Brother John Rockenbach. Prior to becoming a Passionist brother, I lived next door in Arcadia. I have been a Passionist brother for 39 years and have lived in Sierra Madre for 25 years. I'm drawn to the village ambience of our city as much as any other resident. Over these years, we have been a good neighbor and we will always be a good neighbor because as Passionists, we are called to a higher level of kindness and integrity. I would just like to assure our neighbors that, whatever the plans may be for the undeveloped land below the Retreat Center, we will continue to be a good neighbor and be sensitive to your concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brother John. Okay, Jeannie Warlick, followed by Pat Wickham and Michael Cunningham.
Evening, Mayor and City Council, and thank you for bringing, for initiating this discussion and for the opportunity to say a few words. I've been working with the Passionists at Madre de la Rosa Retreat Center, also known as the monastery, for 15 years now. I do not live in Sierra Madre, but I have witnessed in the 15 years that I have been a part of Sierra Madre community, that it's a very close-knit community. I would also say the same thing about Madre de la Rosa. The Passionist priests arrived in Sierra Madre in the early 1920s when they were invited to serve at St. Rita's Parish, where they served for 25 years. They saw a need at that time to offer a place for people to come for personal and spiritual renewal and purchase that property in 1924. The first retreat was held in 1926 under the shade of a Morton Bay fig tree that is still on the property today. I feel like this history is necessary because I don't know if everyone in the community is really aware of what goes on at Madre de la Rosa. And those retreats that started for men only have now reached out to women, Spanish-speaking. We now have a parent teen retreat, married couples, young adults, and constantly offering and, and developing new programs to serve not only the community, but the people that we reach out to that come from Santa Barbara all the way down to San Diego. And I just think it's important, you know, to know that we speak from the heart. Everyone who comes up to Madre de la Rosa is very respectful of the community around us. We have people who have been coming on retreat for 50-plus years and we intend on continuing to offer these retreats for a very long time to come. So I just wanted, I just felt that was necessary to hear a little bit about the history. So I thank you for your time and we look forward to further discussion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warlick. Okay, Pat Wickham, followed by Michael Cunningham. And again, if we could line up behind the podium so that just to shave a few minutes off what is going to be a long meeting.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Mike Cunningham. I'm a resident of Sierra Madre. For all practical purposes, I'm the new kid on the block. I was hired in July 2018 to be the first lay center, Retreat Center Director at Madre de la Rosa. And since then, Sierra Madre has become my home having relocated from Massachusetts. Madre de la Rosa provides a vibrant retreat ministry, serving over 10,000 people from all walks of life each year. They come to our Retreat Center to participate in any number of the various different programs and our Retreat Center ministries. Our current Retreat Center programs take place on about 23 of the 88 acres that's land and that's owned by the province. We draw from a very large area because of the programs that we offer and the serenity of our grounds. People all the way down to San Diego and up to Santa Barbara and in between participate in our programs. And with such a large draw, Madre de la Rosa is a very special place, a place of quiet and peacefulness, where you can get away from the stresses of daily life and get closer to God. So my goal and our goal is for everyone who visits Madre de la Rosa to be able to grow in their own spiritual life. in their own spiritual life. The undeveloped parcel that we call the meadow, which is the subject of what's been discussed tonight's meeting, is typically used once a year for overflow parking, when we host our annual Good Friday Stations of the Cross, which, believe it or not, is about 31 days from today. If the Passionists can sell the meadow, we'll find new ways to continue to host the Good Friday event. Most likely, we'll make arrangements with one or two of our close by private schools for overflow event parking and then provide a shuttle service for our annual pilgrims to the retreat center, so as not to make an impact on our neighbors. We expect to continue as a vibrant retreat center so future generations and citizens of the Sierra Madre and our surrounding communities can experience the peace and tranquility that Madre de la Rosa has long been known for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wickham. Michael Cunningham, followed by Michael Higgins. Oh, what did I do? Oh. Okay. This is Pat Wickham. Okay. Oh, I see.
I think Mr. Wickham was not here when you called. That was Dr. Michael Cunningham.
That was, okay. Okay.
I believe I'm supposed to be next, I hope. My name is Michael Higgins, and I'm a member, of course, of the retreat staff in Sierra Madre, at our retreat center there. I was raised in Arcadia until I was 14, at which time I went to St. Louis to start studying for Passionist life and priesthood. And I was assigned to Madre de la Rosa after a number of years, long years. I came back here in 1975. And I was here for eight years at that time until 1983. And so grew to love Sierra Madre very much. In '83, I went back to the Midwest and didn't come back here to live. I came back to visit family, but I never came back to live until 2013. So it was 30 years after I had left in '83. Since my return in 2013, I have been supported by many lay Passionist volunteers, and I have stood before you to discuss the potential sale of a portion of our land, which we call the meadows. It was some years ago now. Then as now, one of my foremost concerns was how we could move down this road while protecting the peaceful, meditative retreat experience thousands have come to Madre de la Rosa to experience. This makes me, in a way, very much like the other Sierra Madre residents who are speaking this evening about their concerns about developments on the property. The Passionists are committed to maintaining the Madre de la Rosa retreat experience for far into the future, which is why we would like to see homes on this site instead of much more intense and invasive institutional lines that the property is zoned for. Homes provide a better opportunity with more flexibility in how the community is designed and more opportunity for benefits like the park that is being proposed. We look forward at Madre de la Rosa to working with the residents, the council, and staff as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Father Mike. Okay, next up is Deborah Ross, followed by Jean Bardenheim, and then by Deb Sheridan. Is Deborah Ross here?
Deborah Ross, I'm a resident of Sierra Madre for 30-plus years. I came tonight to get educated and thank you very much for, thank you very much, Gabe, for really laying out the history of this project so the, so we, the residents of Sierra Madre, can understand what's going on with the monastery. I do understand they're in a situation where they need to raise funds to further their mission. And as a resident of Sierra Madre, I'm also here to try and hold Sierra Madre to standards that we really love and appreciate. And I would like to cooperate with the city and with the monastery so we both can win at this. So I would encourage us to, as a city, to pursue the proposal that came up earlier of grants, the gentleman who knows grant writers, to possibly pursue purchasing the property from the monastery. Because also, I think if their integrity is intact, they do want comfortable retreat centers so that they can provide peaceful retreats, but having more housing move closer to them, the proximity of more housing, to me is at odds. And just to share my history of the monastery, they, maybe five or six years ago, they put up fencing around the entire property to keep us out. And they've graded the land recently as if they're beginning the process. So I think this, even though everybody's talking about transparency, I think this makes me a little suspicious about their intention of going through this process. It's like, why would you be grading the land before you've been given permission to proceed with your project? So I would encourage everybody to pursue avenues so we can purchase the property from them to avoid housing, keep the city peaceful. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before the next speaker, I mean, this came up twice about grading the land. Is that a fact?
No.
I didn't think so.
Well, if I may have a second?
I just, no, I've got your comment, thank you, but I just want to make sure that we're speaking factually here.
I have to then make my speaking more accurate. What I observed was, all of vegetation was cleared off the land.
Thank you.
They've never done this before.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Okay, Jean Bardheimer, or is that Jean? I'm sorry.
Actually, Bardenhire.
Bardenhire, okay.
I'm a resident of Sierra Madre for about the last 30 years. We live three doors from the monastery property on Sunnyside, so we have, shall we say, a very vested interest in this whole issue. The first comment I would make is that, and thank you very much for a clear presentation of what appears to be some concessions and, you know, a first-line proposal. I would say, no matter how this all falls out, eventually, this will, I'm quite certain, be brought to a ballot issue. If the council doesn't do so, I'm quite certain that a large majority of Sierra Madreans would love to, since I'm one of the very few who's not affiliated with the monastery who's speaking tonight. So it seems like there's been a great majority of other speakers. Next, I want to address the issue of the institutional zoning and the concept. It seems that the listing of institutional uses that was presented is, if not myopic, at least a little skewed and doesn't mention what seemed to be very logical institutional uses, namely restoring or rebuilding the original wonderful retreat center that was there, or expanding the capacity of the retreat center, which has been presented as itself monetized and very successful. And we know that because the cars zip up and down Sierra Madre on the days when the retreats open and close. So increasing the size or capacity of the retreat center and also consider building a domicile for all the retired Passionist priests from around the country. When, in 2016, we had a candid discussion with some of the representatives who said one of the reasons that they needed the money was to support the housing of all these retired religious, and this is, we know, a national problem, especially with all the other financial demands on the Catholic Church these days. And so, a very good positive cash flow from an increased retreat center, along with providing a nice Southern California home for all those shivering retired priests in Chicago and Wisconsin, would be, I would think, something which would solve a lot of their problems and also give them, in perpetuity, very good cash flow from what they presented as a successful option. Finally, the notion that putting a residential development or a nice housing project there, I don't think that really will necessarily preserve the, what they refer to as the peace and tranquility. When Fourth of July is going on, you have fireworks, the smell of lighter fluid for charcoal grills and a lot of rock and roll, I don't think that's right going to be at the monastery edge, such a meditative experience. And finally, with the ADUs that you brought up, the potential in this development is for over 500 new car transits up and down Sunnyside zipping daily, and we're not too sanguine about that. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up is Deb Sheridan, followed by Pamela Clark and then Heather Allen.
Good evening, council members. Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive, Sierra Madre. And I do have a couple of questions. If we let them have these 20 acres to build their houses, what will stop them from building more at a later date? And will we be able to have any input with those houses as a city? If we, if we call it R1, then if they meet our requirements, it seems to me they can just build more houses as we have seen all over Sierra Madre. And my second question is, we're talking about rezoning this to R1. If we rezone it to R3 for multiple housing, or even if they do have smaller houses and they call it low income, we've been through this before. A low-income house to developers seems to mean a million dollars. And, I mean, where are the people that are going to live there? And my third question is, too, about the building that is there, the retreat center that was damaged by the earthquake in 1992, '93. Is that building still going to be there? I'd really like to know about that, too. And of course, then the traffic, as everybody keeps mentioning, I'm sure there will be an extensive report on that as well as CEQA. So thank you all very much, and thank you for what you do.
Okay, I called these out of order, but we'll just keep what I call Pamela Clark, then Heather Allen, then we'll have Dave Banus, and then Barbara Klein after that. So is Pamela Clark here? Okay, Heather Allen.
Heather Allen, I've lived in Sierra Madre all my life. Respectfully, I would like to disagree with something that the city manager said, and this is really more for the benefit of maybe the audience or the people at home, because I know the council is very, very educated on all the ins and outs of what we're talking about tonight. Mr. England talked about how if we go to a lawsuit, and I realize nobody wants to go to a lawsuit, he said, so if we win, we don't have residential, the monastery will automatically do institutional. I don't agree. I don't think that's a good strategy because the truth is, you don't know what the monastery would do. It feels like you're giving in already, so to speak. You've lost the battle if you just give into residential right off the bat. I personally think the city should take a hard stand, play a little hard, play hardball with this, because we've certainly dealt with developers before up here. And, you know, if you have to go to court, so be it. If they want to do institutional and they're legally allowed, allow them to do that. And if they push to do residential, then take them to court. I do think you have an obligation to do, to protect the property values of the people, protect their quality of life up here. I do not believe in the philosophy that just because you own a piece of property, you can build anything you darn well want. I don't think that's, certainly not a Catholic thinking. So, anyway. It concerns me that the city stands to profit from housing far more than they do institutional. It concerns me, it seems like there's a bit of a strategy that's already been planned upon. I assume there's been discussions in closed session because I haven't seen this as part of the open discussion for quite a while, and I do keep my eye on the agendas. It's troublesome to me that it seems like some negotiations have already been made. I understand it's just in theory, it's not in print, nothing's been signed, but donating land and having the monastery do improvements at Bagley Canyon, where's the public participation in any of this? It just concerns me. I'm frustrated, too, because the city would like our help? You know, I'm a member of Preserve Sierra Madre, and we have been together several years, and I remember the early meetings. I believe Preserve Sierra Madre was originally formed because of the monastery issue. And the group of us wanted to put together a parcel tax and have the city buy the land a long time ago, many years ago. This isn't something new that just happened. And at the time, from what I heard, the city manager said, oh, that's not possible. That's a former city manager. At any rate, it fell through. I don't know all the details, but it fell through. And I'm personally kind of frustrated that we do have a ballot coming up for a library that we don't necessarily want, $236 a year, you know, for 40 years, whatever it is. The survey went out, and many people don't want that. But we can't get a parcel tax for the open space that maybe many people do want.
Heather Allen, your time is up.
You know, something to think about.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, Dave Banus, followed by Barbara Klein.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Dave Banus. I am a resident. I'm here to speak in support of a housing project at the vacant property at the Passionate Monastery. Given the recent law passed in Sacramento and the priority of Governor Newsom and the political climate in Sacramento, I would recommend to you that we take the lead together in developing that land in a manner in which we decide and maybe might produce some needed revenue for the city, rather than waste money fighting a battle with Sacramento, which my experience will probably lose. And then Sacramento will provide input into what we do with the land, and possibly they dictate to us what's going to happen with the land. My experience fighting Sacramento, I'll just be, my bias is, it's not very positive. I've had some experience, it's not very good. They have a lot more money and they have a lot more legislators than we do, so we end up losing. At any rate, I appreciate the time that you give to our city to make it a better place. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banus. Okay, Barbara Klein.
Hi, Barbara Lee Klein. Born and raised here in Sierra Madre, so quite an extensive history of the monastery and what's, how it's been over the years. As a child, I was very fortunate to own a horse or a pony and spent years riding the monastery property with the Embry's. Back then, the rain was so heavy that we could ride through the divots that were made from the mud flows, and the weeds were so high that you couldn't see, even sitting on horseback, couldn't see. That was the property to the west, where all the olive trees were, which is now a housing area. I don't know if there's 20 or 30 that were bought. That was all monastery land. Didn't have a problem with it back then when it was built. So I'm here in support of the monastery. I'm going to dig through a storage unit that I have, which goes back to talk about when the initial paperwork was done with attorneys from the city and the attorneys from the monastery, that put together an umbrella of the zoning and planning for that particular area until it was just recently changed. So that might be helpful. I'll give it to some of the men here that are here representing the monastery, might come up for discussions. I think they're being more than generous with putting in a park up there. I'm not even sure if we've paid for the park over here on Ramona. The city's even paid for that. As far as floating a bond, I feel bad that those guys weren't here with Carter, because that's still up for bid or whatever. As far as rezoning it, I'm jumping around, I'm not here that often anymore. The one lot here in back of the police station, I believe that was, I want to say spot-zoned, it's a bad word, but is that R3? I know the Mariposa is R2, but one particular lot was held out for the Rena numbers. I know the Mariposa is R2, but one particular lot was held out for the arena numbers. So, jumping around for who gets low-income housing and who gets what, or whatever, a lot of things have been done here in town, a lot of different kind of things. But, I'm supporting the monastery and what their endeavors are, and the first housing that was built, no one even pays attention that was part of the monastery. So, I don't expect them to be like Dornplatz was with Carter. I know everything will be very nice and respectful, and I think the city really is quite fortunate to have a lot of acreage, you know, parks donated, and just different things that we wouldn't be so fortunate to have, because this is, after all, private property. So, as private property, I believe, as property owners, they have property rights for what they are presenting. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, one last chance, if anybody else would like to speak. I just ask you to fill out a card, okay? Carol Parker, sure, come on up, got your card filled out? Thank you.
I'm Carol Parker, I live on Mariposa. I was born and raised in Sierra Madre. I think I've been here longer than the monastery, because I remember it so well as a child. I'd just like to bring up three things. Number one, Debbie touched on this, but I'd like to make sure that it's really done and it's taken seriously, because it's really easy to walk up there and see there's two exits, and that's it. And they're narrow, and they're tiny, and they lead into tiny streets. So, we have fire problems here, and I think that that is a real important issue. Plus, if anything gets built, there's going to be trucks with dirt and water going up and down and back and forth for how long, and it will really affect the residents. So, I'm concerned about having a traffic study. The other thing is our wildlife. We here in Sierra Madre are very proud of the fact that we have beautiful deer when you drive up into the canyon and you stop and they cross in front of you. We have a lot of issues with our wildlife and the beauty of being here in the mountains and having our animals our friends. So, what will be the impact of any kind of building or any kind of change with wildlife and our furry friends? How will they be affected, and will that be done? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parker. Okay, last call, David Gordon?
David Gordon, 460 Fairview Avenue, just around the corner. If there is no alternative to housing, my question is, first of all, for the monastery, and that is, that are they, do they have a fiduciary obligation to accept the highest bid from the developer? Because what I'm thinking of is, there is going to be a certain conflict of interest between getting something of quality and profit for the developer. And once the monastery has sold the land, presumably it's selling it with planning permission for a certain number of houses and the park, it's up to the developer how they go about it. And so, it's wonderful to hear that the monastery people are going to be good neighbors and are concerned about the quality of what happens. But in practice, once the land has been sold with the planning permission, the control over the quality of the development passes from the monastery to the developer. So, it's of great interest what the process is going to be, the choice of the developer, and whether the monastery is obliged to go to the highest bid, which might lead to a development being not as good as we would like from an urban point of view. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. Okay, I've got another one, Tom Clark, and one more. Can you, madam, could you please submit your card right now? So, okay, this is going to be the last call, give you one more chance to submit a card, and if not, this is going to be the last one after Mr. Clark.
Hi there, I'm Tom Clark, I'm a Pasadena resident, but I'm also a Sierra Madre business owner. I've been in Sierra Madre now for 20 years. We moved our office, it's an architectural practice, we're on the corner of Lima and Sierra Madre. And I have no direct interest in Madre de la Rosa, other than I'm a retreat member as well. But, we're healthcare architects. We develop large healthcare projects, and I've been through a number of different entitlement exercises, and adversarial relationship with the developer and a city is never fun, and it's challenging. Certainly Sierra Madre has faced those challenges in the past. You know, how much better could it be to have a non-adversarial relationship with, you know, the Passionists? There's a commitment to, you know, quality of development, as well as the scale. I mean, there has been preliminary discussions about the size and nature of it, which I haven't participated in, so in that sense, not invested. But, as a business owner, I think in the last 20 years, we took over the old race market. It was an empty shell of a building, it had been for many, many years. And there has been a lot of turnover in businesses, it's a history in Sierra Madre, that all benefits, not that we're in a retail business, but that benefit from development, and certainly well-planned development. I wouldn't see 45 to 100, if that was the maximum under R1, as a gross impact to the city. And in fact, I think it would be quite a boon for business in the town, and would keep a few more of the stores open, and a few more of, you know, the shops. I think we all saw and knew about the Kensington development. It had its own challenges, and yet, Fourth of July, here's one of your great neighbors right on Sierra Madre Boulevard that participates with, you know, full vim and vigor, and, you know, they increase the vitality of the community. So, a few more residents of the community, I think, will also increase vitality, increase business activity in the town, and I think it would certainly be advantageous to the city to embark on a, you know, fair and good negotiation. It sounds like you're already on that path, so I fully support the council's activity in moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay, this is it. Heather Banus is our last speaker of the night.
Good evening. My name is Heather Twaddle Banus. I moved to Sierra Madre when I was seven years old in 1967. Please don't do the math, I'm having a hard time with the birthday that is coming this year. I met my husband in Sierra Madre. You heard from my brother-in-law a little while ago. My mom still lives in the house we moved into on Rancho Road. My in-laws lived in their home on Montecito until they passed. My husband and I live a whopping two blocks outside of Sierra Madre in the city of Arcadia. I am also a past board chair, a past visioning committee chair, a longtime retreatant, and a dear supporter of Madre de la Rosa, and their ministry there and around the world. My plea to you tonight, as council, my plea to the community, is that you will recognize the integrity and good intentions of this organization, I know from the inside out. Change is hard, development can bring a sting just by its very nature, the word makes people anxious. But no one is more committed to a development that makes sense for all concerned than the people that want to continue the ministry that is Madre de la Rosa and has been for almost 100 years. We're on a path and a journey that for the last few months has finally felt like a partnership in exploring these possibilities to the benefit of all. It will take compromise by all, but if we all go into it with the goodwill that I know we are bringing to this, that we're capable of, then this could be something we can all be proud of, all live with, all reap some benefit from, while we're also serving a greater good. So, I thank you all for your willingness to be open to those possibilities.
All right, thank you, Ms. Banus. Okay, we have a lot of questions. I'll give our city manager a shot at it, but council members, if you want to chime in, because I think we have some maybe knowledge about some of these things, or comments that might add to the answer that's given. So, ahead, Mr. City Manager?
Took notes the best I could. I think I left out repeats, and I think I confused a few statements for questions, so we'll see how this goes. One of the first questions was, is the city looking at allowing larger homes for less density? That's a question we put in the presentation for council to consider. What I would say is that trading size for density is likely a good idea, when many of the concerns we hear are about impacts to the community, particularly regarding traffic. But that's strictly a policy concern. Have we considered bond financing? We have. We look quite deeply into that. The issue we keep running into is that if you sell a bond, you have to have funds to pay for that bond. The property has exceptionally high value, as you can imagine, 20 acres in the middle of LA County, and the best city in LA County in Southern California, has high value. And the city, even by selling a bond, would not have the ability to repay that without having to make drastic alterations or eliminations of other services. Can we design the homes and land to be consistent with Sierra Madre homes? So, that's one of the things we talk about, particularly in design review, right? What is consistent with Sierra Madre? What is a typical Sierra Madre home? That's difficult to answer. We have some developments, recently like the Jamison Estates, that will likely be larger. We have other developments that would be similar in size. But I think the idea is, we all have our own subjective concept of what that is, what would happen with this process, as council would be able, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as part of a development agreement, to put in some type of design review guidelines to ensure conformity with the neighborhood. We had a speaker that said they should pay fees for police and fire. They should have impact fees, they do. Every new home that's built in Sierra Madre pays impact fees of $45,000, and then pays 0.21% of a 1% property tax. The idea that the city is making money off this is actually not correct. The money we would get annually, it would pay for about 1.1 police officers, right? But we know the impacts will be greater than that. So, the impact fees are designed to offset the initial impact, improve the infrastructure, improve any expansion of services, but the property taxes are not going to pay for the police service, the fire service, the public work service.
Excuse me, Mr. City Manager, I do want to comment, because I've heard this comment many times over the years about the city profiting. The city doesn't profit. Everything we have is owned basically by the people that live here, and every dollar we get in, we try to spend in the city's best interest. So, there is no such thing as the city making money off anything that happens here in Sierra Madre.
That's correct, Mayor. There was a question about, will this be brought to the ballot? I'm not sure of the context of that. This is a private property ownership that has the legal right to develop, so there's not a ballot question that could eliminate that. If it was in the context of, could the voters approve development agreement? And I missed that in context, that is a possibility. Development agreement could be brought forward, however, the private property owner is not going to be bound by a vote of the public. We had a commenter say the institutional uses listed were myopic, and can't they just restore or expand the use? Again, we have, I have a lot of conversations about people who say, "Why don't they sell it to someone who wants to keep it open space?" And that's the same answer to that, is why don't they just expand the use of it? One of an institutional uses is a church, it's because it's not profitable. If there was economic interest in expanding what they operate today, or changing operations that would exceed what they can get from the sale, I think they would have explored that by now. So, a lot of the times, when we hear, "Why doesn't the property owner do this or that", it comes back to economic interest. I don't know the answer to if the damaged building is going to remain there, so we'll follow up on that.
Can I comment on that? When there was the earthquake, that was the actual monastery that was demolished. This, what exists now is the retreat center. So, the monastery was demolished after the earthquake. And one more point, and again to the city manager's point, it would have been rebuilt if it was advantageous to the Passionists. They would have done it if it made sense, and they didn't.
So, we have, what would stop more homes from being built, and do the residents get input? I'll say, this came forward extremely early in the process, to say that a lot of work has been done. Both sides have discussed a total of four bullet points each. This is coming forward much earlier than I think it would in other cities for the very purpose of allowing residents, boards, commissions, property owners, impacted neighbors to give input. And part of the negotiation would be to limit the development. So, we can't bind a development agreement that's contrary to state law, which is why we address the ADUs, but we certainly can have a development agreement that limits the total maximum number of lots that can go there. What would the monastery do if residential was not allowed? Are you giving in too quickly? So, I knew this question was going to come up tonight, so I had a very direct conversation with the person who's actually back east that runs the real estate arm of this, and they said, "There are two things that will happen. We will determine if, after we win the lawsuit, if we can go forward with residential and subtracting that cost, if that is a greater dollar figure, or if institutional is a greater dollar figure, we will simply go forward with institutional." And they referenced a plan that they have. So, the point is, it's not, we're not giving in. They have a legal right to develop. The problem is, the development that's legally allowed is a development that is more impactful and less desirable for that community, let alone that development does not concede anything to the city, including a park or improvements or anything of that nature. Why can't we get an open space parcel tax? Residents can. So, the comment was in context, why does the library get to go? The library came to council twice, asked council to put it on the ballot, council declined. The library board said, "We'll do it ourselves." Residents can do that. They'd have to enter into negotiation to agree upon a sale price, but that's the petition process. They can do that. What about the traffic ingress and egress? That's a concern under any development, residential or institutional. That's what the traffic engineers get hired for. You have EIR, you'll have the sequel process, and there'll be a determination made on if that portion of the neighborhood can support X traffic, and it's going to be not determined by staff, but by an engineer. Do they have a fiduciary responsibility or conflict of interest, and can they choose the developer? So, the easy answer on that is yes, they can choose the developer. This private property transaction, the city is not involved in that. I would imagine they do not have a fiduciary responsibility, they're not aligned or tied by the same laws as public entities. However, we have been given signals that they're willing to not take the highest bidder, right? Including, they can monetize the 45 acres that they're willing to donate to the city at any time. They can get the value of that by donating the development rights, and instead, they're waiting to give it to the city. If they were strictly interested in selling to the highest bidder, we wouldn't be having discussions about concessions of a three-and-a-half acre park, or improvements in Bailey Canyon Park, because that's not something they have to provide. So, I think there is a three-way pole on, they have legal rights, they have a mission, and they have a city. And everyone needs to try and recognize the constraints on all parties, but when we talk about the city, the greatest constraint we have is they have a legal right to develop as institutional, and the city is going to have to allow that without concession. So, what we're talking about is a negotiation for an institutional property that is more dense and impactful, or a negotiation on a residential property which is less dense and less impactful. Where the negotiation ends up, again, is where it starts. So, when we look at the potential outcomes of this, there's not an outcome where it's open space.
Okay, and just one more comment too regarding negotiations is, you know, the way I look at this is that the Passionists, they have an interest that they're trying to monetize. The city has an interest that we're trying to get the best deal possible for our residents... for our residents and provide benefit in the form of a park and minimizing the impact. And a developer who certainly has interest in making money. So, you know, it's all these three things coming together, and a negotiated agreement is in everybody's best interest. If we start litigating, then there's a fourth party that sucks money out of this, and that means less money for the rest of us. So, my experience, and you know, I've sat in on a couple of sessions also with Mr. Harabedian, who was mayor at the time, and my impression is, and you know, I mean, I wasn't born yesterday. I'm not totally naive about things. But my impression is working with them is that we are really negotiating in good faith, and I really believe they're forthcoming with us when they tell us what their objectives are and what their mission is. I mean, they don't have to say that we prefer residential development than institutional. But they're very upfront about that, and you could say that they conceded some leverage by saying that. So, I just want to say that the comments I've heard about them being an upstanding organization, I believe that myself. And Mayor Protem, if you've got any comments on that, just go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm not, no offense to the current-
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're allowed to do this for another month at least, to mix up our titles.
No, that's right. No, I-
This is like the event at Sierra Madre School where we had two mayors-
That's right, we had two mayors at the same time. I, no, I would totally agree. I couldn't have said it better myself. I do think that the staff and the organization and every representative that we met with and discussed on numerous occasions, this project was totally forthright. I mean, there was no, this wasn't a adversarial negotiation at all. And they were, I think that they did actually, to the mayor's point, cede some leverage by being totally honest with us about wanting to have low-density residential so that didn't impact the community as much, knowing that, and this was a question I asked earlier, about, I think, long-term revenue for the site. Institutional, I think, undoubtedly makes more economic sense for the retreat center. I think that they can make a lot more money off of that property at the expense of our residents, really. But I think that the conversations were really good, and I think that one gentleman brought up, why can't they just build housing for the retired priests, the Passionists? And we actually discussed that. I think realistically, to the extent that the scale would be sufficient to actually appease the need for how many retirees they would need, I think we have to be really careful what we would be asking for there. I think you would, instead of potentially having 45 or less homes, you'd potentially have hundreds of units for retired Passionists, which would just continue to be filled year after year as the Passionists passed away. And I'm not sure that that is, that impact, really, for the residents and the city would necessarily be better. But it was something that we discussed. And so, I do think that, I think that they've been very good neighbors, and I think they've been very good neighbors to the city for years, but through this process, too. So, I would agree with that. Do we want to just go into comments now, or do you want to-
Well, that's kind of what we're doing.
Okay, so you're okay. Yeah, and I'll just say, and I'll just, I'll conclude with, I think that we all have, I think we can all agree. Hypothetically, we would love to see this property not change. I don't think that there's anyone here on this council, in the audience, I don't think the Passionists or the retreat center wants to do this. I think it's very clear from the conversations we have with them is, this is coming from a place of financial need. And this is, I think, painful for them as well. And I think that we, as a city, and the residents, you know, all of us who have spent many years here, would love to see that property unchanged. I think that this idea that we would be able to get the millions of dollars that are needed to buy it, we explored very, very strenuously, and we looked at all the options. I'm very skeptical, because we have gone down this road, in terms of grant funding and actually developing or devoting it as open space with some sort of conservancy. I don't think the numbers are going to work out. I wish I could stay, you know, state differently up here and give folks some sort of hope that that could work. I don't think that, frankly, the city as a whole would want us to spend, we're a $24 million a year budget city. I don't think that residents would want us to spend, I don't know how much it would be, but a fair amount of money relative to our budget to buy a piece of property, and then really not have the money to do anything with it. It would stay pretty much the way it is. We wouldn't really have the money to develop it into a park. And so, my view is, if we can actively negotiate with a party rather than be adversarial, noting their legal rights, which will give us a sizable park, I mean, a sizable park that would be turnkey and ready to go with low density, low impact relative to what could go up there, I think it's a good start. I think it's a good start, and I think that we, as a city council, putting aside what we individually personally want, we as a city council, I think, have a duty to, to actually go down this path and see where it comes. And it's going to involve a fair amount of public input and meetings. And this is just the first one, but have no doubt, we're at step one. And we're going to have numerous meetings once a plan is brought before the city council, and you guys will be a part of that. But I do want us to all be on the same page in terms of realistic expectations. I mean, I think that if I had some way of preserving this property while also allowing the Passionists to get the amount of money that they are in financial need of, I think we would all go there. I mean, I think that's what we tried to do for a long time. I don't think that that is realistically an option at this point. So, I appreciate the mayor at the outset saying, you know, we need options and we want ideas. The ideas that we're hearing are good ones, and I think they're coming from a good place. I just want to make sure that people know that those were ideas that we explored at the beginning. And we don't have that amount of money to put aside to buy this property at this point. So, you know, given all those factors and where we are, I do think that, you know, the way that the city manager has laid it out, I totally agree with. And I think that we need to be actively negotiating this to get the best outcome for our city and our residents. And I think that really is going down this route of a low-density residential property development. But we'll see. We have to get this, we have to get this process started, and I think it's a good thing that we've kicked it off this way.
So, I, you know, there's not much I can say to, that I don't agree with, with Council Member Harabedian. I think that one of the comments in the very beginning of the presentation is kind of where I was at. Oh, I thought this was done. It's been quiet, and I think it's going to go away. Unfortunately, the reality of it is, I knew this would rear its head back into our conversations. You know, when I moved, and I've told the story many times, when we moved to Sierra Madre and bought our house, we bought our house right across from One Carter. At the time, no one shared that there was going to be development there, had no idea that, I think at the time, was 60 homes. I'm not sure what the number was. But as we've seen over the last few years, we had to go through how many years of litigation. And I think the dollar number that was thrown out for how much we paid for litigation was underestimated pretty significantly. And we really are at a point right now where we are looking at potential litigation, because this is private property, and they have private property rights. But I think the other piece that was mentioned by one of the speakers today that we really didn't emphasize much is where the state is right now with housing, and what kind of jurisdiction they have over us, the cities. And we've already seen it in the last year, and they're dictating what we can and cannot do. And it might get to a point where it's the state that's dictating what could be built there. And that is much more frightening than even that scary chart that city manager put up. And I think that's an important chart, and for those of you that haven't had the opportunity to take a look at it, I'm sure it'll, it can be available. But when you're looking at the different possibilities of even the residential buildings, and how many can be put on there, not understanding what can be done with institutional, it's actually very frightening. And even at R1, to look at 116 dwelling units, and if we can get it to around the 45, 50, because the Passionists is really, and Modern De La Rosa is really wanting to work with us, I think it works best in our favor as a community. And if we can be part of that discussion table as opposed to being adversarial in it, I think it's best for all of us. Yeah, ideally, I'd like to leave it just the way it is. But we're at a point right now where we need to make a decision, and I think the decision should be not just in the best interest of the community and residents, but really how we can approach this as a whole, working together on it, and we can be part of the conversation.
Can I, sorry, just jump in there, because Mayor Protem's point, there was a question by Deb Sheridan, which was a good one, and I think Mayor Protem's point was hitting on it, which is, what if, if we're amending this to R1, what is going to prevent them from coming back and just developing it more, right? And I think, I don't think we answered that, right? So, can we, can you just answer? I think the answer is, we would enter into an agreement with, you know, a master plan with deed restrictions to where they wouldn't be able to, if, correct me if I'm wrong, they wouldn't be able to develop any of that property additionally, other than what was approved under that master plan and that agreement. Is that correct, or am I wrong about that?
So, it would, it would certainly be addressed in the development agreement. Currently, the lot size development would also likely be the minimum allowable. So, you'd have two, you'd have the development agreement, you'd also have the minimum allowable lot size. So, for further development to take place, the city would have to amend all of its R1 codes to reduce the minimum lot size. And then, it would also have to, you somehow have to get outside of the development agreement that was purchased. The kind of wild card in that is, again, the state. And we can't bind anyone to an agreement that would be in violation of state law. So, that's why we brought up the ADUs, because we want to be transparent that even as we're negotiating down the number of properties, the state has given property owners the right to increase that density even in R1 zoning. So, you're correct, it would be in the development agreement. It's also would be addressed in the general plan and current R1 standards. And then, again, the only wild card is what can the state do?
Okay. Councilmember Goss?
Following, following up on that, wild card, R3H is a possibility, right? Not even, not a probability.
So, what-
It's a possibility they could impose that on us for that land, correct?
Councilmember Goss, it's hard to answer what actions the state is going to take. They passed a number of bills collectively known as the Housing Crisis Act that addressed this. We are likely to get exceptionally stringent laws passed next year, which will limit our ability to review housing applications. Already, we have limited ability to review housing applications. The density bonus for low-income housing is already in our code. Right now, we're going through, you'll see a presentation tonight on arena numbers, and see that we're nowhere close to hitting the goal that's mandated. Because we didn't do any development from the last reporting period to this reporting period, we have to designate new areas. So, the longer we don't meet the numbers, the greater, or tighter, I should say, the state is going to strangle our regulatory authority. So, at some point, it is likely, yes, the housing will be forced upon cities with very little ability to regulate it locally.
My comments are very similar to my colleagues. I guess, a couple additional remarks. I guess my first comment is that I'm the only one up here that actually lived in that neighborhood. I lived on Syracuse Drive, right below that, the Meadows, for 14 years. And I recall that if I, I think I can speak for the people that still live up in that area. They do not want an institutional development, anything like the Kensington up there. I can't imagine such a thing. And so, we're staring down, figuratively speaking, you know, two barrels of a double-barrel shotgun. If we don't do something that has lower impact, that is a very significant impact. I think that's, that's about 70% of the argument right there. We don't really have much of a choice. But furthermore, we don't have control over the state as they interpret the use of this land. As we're talking about, well, should we do 45 units, or less, or more? The state would like to see us have triple or quadruple the number of units there to meet these arena numbers. So, it seems to me that we're, as usual, like, we find ourselves this a lot, kind of between a rock and a hard place. And I think it's kind of the devil we know versus the devil we not know. And I think, I think the fact that Modern De La Rosa have been good neighbors to this city, and have, according to all parties, all the principals involved, been very forthright, very open, very transparent. And I think they've made some concessions already that I certainly wouldn't have expected from them. That it seems to me that this is probably the best possible approach, at least if we start or continue our negotiations at this point. It seems to me, I'm going to use the word prudent, it's not optimal. I would prefer to have that field empty. I would love to have it empty in perpetuity. I, one other comment about having lived up there, my son was very young when we lived up there. I think we, when we moved down to Ramona Avenue where we're at now, I think he was six or seven. Boy, would we like to have a three and a half acre park up there that we could have gone to. I mean, that's an amazing, an amazing thing. And I think if you, if you want, just for comparison purposes, when I was first told this, I said, well, how big is Sierra Vista Park? About three and a half acres minus, if you subtract the ballparks, the ballfields. So, that's basically equivalent to the biggest park we have in the city. We're getting it for free, and they're going to cover the maintenance of it in perpetuity. Oh, and by the way, they're going to upgrade Bailey Canyon. I think that these kinds of, these kinds of sweeteners, I think, are more than just symbolic. I think they do go to the good faith that we're hearing on the other side of the table here. So, I'm hopeful that we might be able to even craft out a little bit better deal here. And if all the stars line up, maybe we can get this done before the state comes in and tells us we can't do it.
Exactly. Okay, I'll just wrap it up. I just want to remind the public, when we did the Kensington, we had nine public hearings on that one. So, you will have the opportunity to weigh in, and again, and again, and again. Before we actually get to that point, I do believe that the fathers are going to hold a couple of informal sessions to get feedback, because now the state law requires that you can have no more than five public hearings. So, that's from the time they actually submit a plan. So, before a plan gets submitted, I'm hoping they do some public outreach. I also want to comment, too, I think a comment was made about the parks. Nothing has been decided about the parks. It was just an idea to upgrade Bailey Canyon a little bit. I think if you look at Arcadia Wilderness Park, you would see a wilderness park that's a little bit more amenable to people actually using the park. And not too many people actually use part of the picnic areas there. But we want public input on that, so there will be some meetings to tease that out and come up with the best possible design there. Just regarding grant money, if there is grant money, not bond money, but grant money available, then that becomes a fourth partner, and maybe that money can be used to even expand the park further. Who knows? So, we'll look into all those things. This is the first step, even though, yes, there has been some negotiation to get us to the point where we have something to talk about. So, with that, I'll close. And what do we need, Mr. City Manager, as far as direction?
So, Mayor, we're not asking for a vote tonight, but I'm taking from the conversation direction that you would like me to continue discussing a development agreement, first an MOU and then a development agreement with the owners of the property.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, we don't need a vote, then. That's just a direction. Right? Okay. All right, so I'm going to propose we have a break here, and Mr. Harabedian has to lead.
I'm going to be stepping away. Yeah, thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, everybody. All right, thanks, everybody. Okay.
Okay, my name is Diane Russell Carter and I'm the Executive Director for Foothill Workforce Development Board. I want to thank City Council today for having me here. This is the Chair of the Workforce Development Board, Dan Lean. And I'd like to again thank all of you, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Arzamende, who is a Policy Board member for the Foothill Workforce Development Board. Today I'm going to talk to you about letting you know what workforce development programs and activities are in your local service area. And I'm sorry, I don't have the PowerPoint.
It's coming up.
It's coming up?
Is it? Mr. Carlson?
You want to go to the EOC first? I probably have a really good shot at getting this up. And I think Brett can go first.
Would you prefer to wait for them?
I can just go.
Okay, just go ahead.
I've been doing this for 28 years. I can just go.
We have your presence.
You're all right.
The old fashioned way.
Old fashioned way, okay. I want to thank the Foothill Employment and Training Consortium Policy Board in the Pyramid for our local area, which is six cities. City of Sierra Madre, Duarte, Sierra Madre, Pasadena, South Pasadena, and Monrovia. The Policy Board, and it's a local elected official from each of our six cities. They kind of sit on the top of the pyramid of all the services and activities that happen regarding workforce development. So again, I want to thank the Policy Board members and thank them for their support in making sure that we are meeting the needs of their cities. I'm now on page this. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Okay, we are funded by federal dollars. And the federal dollars come down from, come from the Department of Labor and through Sacramento and down to the local areas. There are 45 workforce development local areas in the state of California. And there are seven in Los Angeles County. Los Angeles County has the most populous workforce development board in the nation. Los Angeles City Workforce Development Board is the second largest board in the nation. What we do is we provide quality workforce services for special populations leading to self, excuse me, leading to self-sufficient employment. And when I say qualified populations, many of those are those that have lost their jobs. Those who have not, do not have the right kind of certification or career technical education to be able to enter employment. We have some that are services for youth. And it's really interesting, for us, our youth are age 14 through 24. And I just can imagine if someone had called me a youth at 24, how I would have felt. But it is 14 through 24. And we look to serve those who are underserved by many of, and disconnected from many of the traditional paths that youth take. We look for foster youth. We serve foster youth. San Gabriel Valley is, has the most foster youth in Los Angeles County. So we're a bed for foster youth, justice-involved youth, and unfortunately, those are also a lot of our foster youth. Also, single young parents. So we do a lot with the youth. And then again, like I said, with the dislocated workers, those who have been laid off and those who have just not been really successful in the workforce with the skills that they have. We look to create high-road jobs. And high-road jobs, there's a simple definition, let me remember it. High-road jobs, high-road jobs is a job working in an area where there is a self-sufficient wage. A bear, I'm sorry, self-sufficient wage, benefits, and an identifiable career ladder. That's really important because we need benefits. People need benefits these days. And so many people have entered into dead-end jobs, which has brought us to the place that we are today regarding some of our socioeconomic issues that we're facing. So we get information from the Department of Labor, from the state of California, labor market information, from our local Chamber of Commerce, Arcadia Chamber of Commerce, Monrovia Chamber of Congress, Chamber, I'm saying the right thing, yeah. See, I don't have my PowerPoint up here. We work with the chambers to make sure that we have the right labor market information so that when we put people in employment or help them to obtain employment, it's something that they can count on and look to move forward with. Okay, sample of services provided. I'm going to take you through as quickly as like a kind of a one, two, three. That first box is when an individual comes in for services or we go out to different areas to provide services and to register people into our programs. The first thing we do is an initial, an assessment of their skills. We look at their literacy skills, proficiencies for certain occupations, their aptitudes, ability, and what kind of employment supports they may need to obtain a job. Next after that, they speak with a career counselor and they share labor market information with them. And we coordinate with a lot of our local partners, which are education, CBO, health departments, cities, just to see, be able to provide wraparound services for our clients. Next, we develop a plan. We develop a individual employment plan and we prepare individuals to enter unsubsidized training. And then for us, as I said, there are 45 in the state and seven in LA County. For us at Foothill, we have adopted a real earn and learn type of program format. We've experienced, I've been Executive Director going on four years. Prior to that, I was the Operations Manager. So I have over a 30-year career in workforce development. And one thing that has always remained true, the minute you are able to put a dollar in a participant's hand, the minute they're able to get their first paycheck, it changed the entire perspective of how they live. And we've seen it over and over and over again, no matter if it's youth, no matter if it's justice-involved individuals. So we concentrate on earn and learn activities. That is paid work experience, where we pay the wages. And we do that primarily with our youth. And I have to take a moment to thank your City Hall because I believe the numbers checked, you had five youth. You provided a work site for five of those youth from those underserved populations. So we thank you for that. Also, on-the-job training. That's where an individual goes in and we pay half of their wage. The employer pays the other half of their wage. We have a max of $5,000. And they're trained right there on the spot. And for us, we enter into a contract with that employer. And in that contract, it says, and this person must be retained for one year after the OJT experience. So that is very popular for us. We do a lot of direct placement and a lot of pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship opportunities. Apprenticeship opportunities, it's the plan going forward. They're very enthusiastic about it in Washington and our governor is very enthusiastic about it. His goal for 2021 is 500 apprentices. And what that breaks down to, one out of every 36 employees would be in an apprenticeship. So we work with these earn and learn because again, they deliver money quickly. Some people can afford to go to community college or afford to go to a trade school. But many of our participants, especially right now, in low unemployment, they cannot. This is so that they can survive. Okay, the next, excuse me, page. It's more of our funding map. Our dollars come from the Department of Labor. And it goes to State EDD, Employment Development Department. City of Pasadena is our fiscal agent. We're headquartered in the city of Pasadena. And those are the six cities that we serve as the last arrow. Okay. The data point. What happens in the budget point? What happens is that as the money comes to the state, the state has a sub-allocation formula. And again, this is all federal law. But DOL and the State EDD, they're the ones responsible for the calculations for each individual city in your consortium, as well as how much that individual city gets. And it's based on a formula that takes into consideration your population and into consideration unemployment numbers and how many of those underserved distinct youth are in your community. And so this is how the 2018 and 2019 budget, a total little over 3.9 million. And these are the allocations. Sierra Madre is $26,000. But one thing I wanted to, to present, because I was asked this question at a previous presentation. When we look at these, first of all, I have to tell you, we never see these on the local level. We never see the sub-alotments per city. We get base money based on a category, youth, laid-off workers, adults. We never see this. So this is completely out of our control. The state, I asked them to pull this for me specifically for this presentation and this is the information that they could give me. So I was asked in another presentation, well, if our city has X amount of dollars, $10, and you've already used $9, does that mean we only get one more dollar worth of service? And that answer is no. We serve comprehensively. Anyone who comes into the office from our six cities who have lived or been laid off from anywhere in our six cities, we serve them. We don't say, "Sierra Madre, you only have $1 left, so we can give you a pencil." We don't say that. We don't do that. So I wanted to make that clear because that was a question before. Here we have kind of our performance, how many individuals we registered, number of services provided, number of individuals enrolled in training. And this is from a database that the state maintains and we draw information for it. I was able to draw the information that so far for this 12-month period, we registered 79 people from Sierra Madre. The next page is program performance. And this is really just to show you that where we are regarding our performance and percentages. And I'll just explain the first one and the other four kind of just follow along. This one that says Employ Q2, that tells you how many people have a job at least six months after they've left our program. And so these are pretty high numbers. And I have to say, right now, every so many years, about four years, the state recognizes high-performing boards. They come in, they do an evaluation of the setup, they look at our funds, and they look at our programs and our performance. And we received one four years ago and we're in line to receive another one. They're going through a final evaluation, so we hope that we're on Santa's goodie list again. Last but not least, I'd like to identify the partners that we work with here. Again, we have two boards. We have the Foothill Employment and Training Consortium. Again, they are at the top of the pyramid and Mayor Pro Tem sits on that board. And then we have a Foothill Workforce Development Board that is made up of members from private sector, at least 51%, members from education, labor, community-based organizations, economic development. And we also meet with the board on a quarterly basis and that's kind of where the work gets done. But we have a really center, we create a lot of synergy between the three boards. And I'm really, really happy to say that we are all three boards, two boards and the operations working in tandem for what we know is good work and what we know people need. And that is it. Thank you for your support. And thank you for letting me give my presentation without the PowerPoint. If there are any questions, and I don't know, Dan, if you wanted to say.
Questions?
Dan Lean, Chair of the Board of Directors for the Workforce Development Board. You've had a long evening, so really brief is that this is one of the few government-funded programs, coming from the private sector. I'm a banker of 41 years, that truly is programmed and works correctly. It's a total community engagement. So our board members cover from all of our six cities, but we don't need marketing dollars, whatever have you. Our board members are our frontline information gatherers on the economic conditions, layoffs, whatever happens, where the employment needs are, where the employment needs are coming, where the employer's needs are and where the employment base needs need to be. So I got to tell you, it's refreshing because our board members are charged with advocacy and they bring it to the local level. So we want to thank you, Sierra Madre, for your support and we look forward to the continuing work that you do for us.
Well, I want to thank you folks because this sounds like a fantastic program because I do know youths have a lot of trouble figuring out what to do and don't even know how to get a job, much less evaluate what prospects are out there. So I mean, this is, this is really great. I wish you guys had 10 times the funding and you could help 10 times as many people and that still wouldn't even be enough, you know, so.
You know, I will say just this one thing and just know that again, in the Mayor Pro Tem, you have the expert sitting at the table. She can speak for us regarding our services, know how to get in touch with us so that if we want to have another conversation about what needs to be done in Sierra Madre. But we have found, and we've been kind of clocking this for about the last three years, that now the workforce has changed so much, industry has changed so much, that we are now doing more adult career awareness than we are youth career awareness. Because they don't know where to go. They don't know what to do. They're afraid of robots. We're trying to tell them, "Look, the robots are not coming tomorrow. We are going to exist with the robots. We're going to work with them." And that's just how it's going to be. What does that look like? Working on that mindset with the adult population is a huge priority of us, for us also.
Okay, that's good to know.
I'm just going to just conclude with one comment that for anyone's watching or if you know of any youth, typically it's during the summertime when we're recruiting to hire. So I know that I brought my neighbor from across the street into, they're not here, but across the street from where I live, and worked here and I brought in a couple other folks. So just keep that in mind and we'll make sure that we notify folks. But if there's interested in youth getting some experience, whether it's here at City Hall or other places around the area, we'll definitely get that information for you. So thank you. Thanks for participating.
Thanks again. Okay, now we've got a presentation by city staff on our Emergency Operations Center upgrades.
The Captain President Bartlett giving the presentation.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilman Goss. Pleased to be able to present to you guys tonight an update on the current status of the city's Emergency Operations Center. We've come a long ways in getting this thing operable and very comfortable in its current status that, you know, should something arise, even this evening, which I'm not going to look because I'm working, I don't want that to happen, we can open that up and be very effective in helping our community. So we put together a short PowerPoint, kind of highlighting some of the, some of the key things that have been happening recently to kind of get this all going. So just for those that not aware of the Emergency Operations Center, more commonly known as the EOC, it lives right below us underneath in the, in the city's basement down here of City Hall. And most of the time it's there for a classroom, it's there for trainings, it's there for meetings or what have you. But we have the ability to convert it into basically our Emergency Operations Center. And the whole focus on that is to support any operations that are going to be out in the community, whether it's going to be fire-related, whether it's going to be law enforcement-related or even public works-related. The EOC is there to help support and help mitigate whatever incident is currently going on. It's actually, it allows for interaction, inter-agency coordination, executive decision-making. It's where we can look back to our policies for the guidance we get through and we can, you know, go through the logistics and informations and everything there. It's an organizational structure, as you can see there in the, in that slide here. Basically, the EOC Director, who is our city manager, Mr. England. And we will have basically four sections to it. Operations, planning, logistics, and finance combined with administration. And then a little subset off of there, basically your command staff, Republic Information Officer, Safety Officer, and Liaison Officer. So those are the main components of the staff for the EOC, along with as many people as we need to put in there to help support those particular chiefs that are in those sections. And we refer to them as a section chiefs. As you can see, that's probably what it looks like today. We actually, the city hosted a training for our Area D neighbors that had to do with the EOC training. And we had a couple personnel that were down there receiving that training as well. So it was, it was really nice to see that we were able to lend out a hand and get our neighbors in there. So we had, I'm assuming, I didn't get to see the roster, but people from probably Monrovia, Arcadia, Temple City, all of Area D down in there. So that's kind of what it looks like when it's, when it's not formed. But with the help of, I think you guys may have met him once or twice, Bob Spears. He's been very instrumental. He's kind of been my right-hand guy on this. He's very knowledgeable on EOC operations through, through the LA School District. And he's, he's just going full bore in this, so I can't thank him enough in his time and commitment to this. But you, as you can see and hear, we've, we are able to transition it into those different sections that we talked about. And we have personnel that have been identified within the city that should we activate this, we call them up and they come back in and respond and they will help hopefully mitigate the problems that we have. But to kind of go through it, like I said, we have the management section in there. And you can see on each one of these tables here, we've been able to purchase brand-new laptops and new phones to go with our new phone system. So these things are actually allocated to the EOC. They're stored locked up, charged ready to go whenever, whenever we have to open it. And we're really happy with that. So it was, it was a good investment that we've, we've made so far in there. Everything in there has its own documentation for each operational section. In there, we have vests, everybody's identified. So we can go through, you got, excuse me, like I said, the different sections in here. And it's all set up. We've also, I wish Bob has really helped out. He's gone through and he's done a lot of this stuff, making these posters so we have a situational way, what is referred to as a sit-stab board, situational status board. So we can basically outline everything that's going on in the city, depending on the incident and the type of the incident. And we can prioritize things and try to see how we're going to solve that. So he's actually come up with a lot of stuff on his own time. He's down there and he's creating these things and posting them up for us. One thing that I'm really happy that we're being able to do right now is when we talk about these incidents and we hope they never happen, but when they do, we all talk about the, you know, how they affect everybody, whether it's going to be displacement or whether we're going to have to rebuild or whatever the case is, as you are well aware of, trying to get the funding for that. We've now are very close to finishing up a plan that's going to help us recoup some of that stuff. But not only that, it's going to help us get into the mitigation money that's out there, which we are, you know, it's really hard to tap into without this plan, which I'll speak about here in probably the next, the next slide. But according to the Stafford Act that's, that's been in place, there's quite a few programs out there, grant programs, that we are hopefully going to be able to tap into to help mitigate some of the things that we've been able to identify through combined meetings that we've had with the city personnel and staff. We've also reached out to our neighboring agencies, whether they're the cities, whether they're the electric company or what have you, forestry, LA County, fire even for their portion of the hills up here. And we have identified some things and how to mitigate those. And so what's really going to be good is the funding that's going to be out there to help us. We are about into our third stage of our revised Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. We haven't had one enact, I believe the year was 2008, if I'm not mistaken. So we've hired a consultant to help put this together. It's a very tedious job and the person that we've helped is, she's really good at it. She's very current on all the FEMA regulations and everything else. So we're, we're well into that. Basically, what we have left is to send this up to Cal OES for their overview and insight and any recommendations they have. And then it'll go to FEMA for their, for his final, final approval and then back to you folks for the blessing so we can actually implement that. But as you can see on there, we've had quite a few people within the city staff that have been a part of this and very instrumental and giving information and ideas and just their institutional knowledge on trying to put this together. So we're hoping through the tapes of bureaucracy that that's going to be in play within, you know, hopefully this year, to be honest with you. Once it gets up to the federal level, it's going to, it may take a while, a couple revisions. But my hopes is actually within about four or five months would actually be really nice. One other thing that we're doing as well is we're implementing a Mass Care and Shelter Annex. Hopefully you never have to actually open this thing up, but should we have incidents within the city where we have displaced residents, we are putting together an annex that's going to help guide us through the procedures of how we can shelter them, where we can shelter them, and everything that we're going to need to support that effort. And I definitely want to give some credit to our Community Services Department for helping that, helping with that. They're, they're pretty much going to be tasked with trying to support this should we have to do it. They're very versed in the community and we felt that they would be probably the best people suited for that. So there, there's a few sections in there that are kind of getting finalized with them and their contacts. We're going to be implementing that as well as the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Along with all the good things that have been happening, we've done, we've implemented quite a bit of training recently. We've, as you're well aware, there are new personnel that have been hired recently as long, or as well as personnel that have been here for quite a while. But we were, what we need to have in the, in the EOC is basically an ICS level of 100, 200, 700, and 800, where some different courses that FEMA pretty much says that you kind of need to have to be in the EOC and operate it and run it. So these levels, this course here that we just actually were able to put on down in the EOC and provide for employees, gives them that certification for this particular, this particular course. And we had the 12, it was 12 participants in that class. So that was, it was really good. We got them up to speed and we got more classes coming for them, which we've actually sent. When I talked about the section chiefs and the different components of the EOC, we've also been able to send personnel, personnel out to get an eight-hour course on each one of those sections. So now we have people that are currently up to date on, you know, the latest and greatest. And we'll be able to sit down there and go through the forms, go through all the, all the different things that are going to be needed and required. And they've obviously taken their, their time out of their, their work scales to go do that for us. So I wanted to recognize them. But those are some additional courses that we've done. We plan on bringing in many more. And a lot of these are, actually pretty much all of these are, as you can see, this one, they're all funded. This one was funded through a security grant through the, excuse me, a Homeland Security Grant. So it was at no cost to us, eight-hour course, and they're, they're getting trained up on it. So we're really happy about that. And that's pretty much an update in a nutshell. And that's pretty much an update in a nutshell. Like I said, we're very happy that we can actually say that we can open this thing up this evening if we need to and, and help support any incidents that are, are going on in town. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, you're happy. We're happy. This is, this is really big. I just, you know, like my colleague, Councilman Goss has said often, that government can really be a force for good. And this is very impressive that you've done this kind of planning behind the scenes here. And it makes me feel good that we can respond to an emergency because you've got this, the training and the structure in place. So, thank you very much.
Speaking of, I have to go on a call, so, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
So Mayor, real quick, Captain Bartlett, he's been appointed as our EOC Director. One of the areas that has been overlooked was our EOC when he says we don't have, hadn't updated plans since 2008 that were required to be updated every five years. That's correct. We found stuff that was older. When Mr. Spears first started going down there and volunteering, he's finding plugs for phones, phone chargers that don't exist anymore. So we've been able to get at least three or four FTEs worth of work out of him. And James Carlson has also provided support. But we've expended this year in the budget about $50,000 on bringing the EOC up to date. That's not including the man-hours or the trainings or anything like that. And we see the benefits pretty immediately of the structure we have in place. Our Area D opened their EOC at Level Two today for the coronavirus, COVID-19. And we were able to immediately start tracking costs the city is going to incur to look at possible refunding of costs that we spend. And without the work that Captain Bartlett's done and Bob Spears and James Carlson, we wouldn't be able to do this. So they're not only bringing us up to speed, making us legal, they're actually having immediate benefit from the investment we've made.
Very impressive.
Quick question and comment. So please extend our thanks to Captain Bartlett for presenting that. I mean, it's, it really is impressive. I have been to the county's EOC, I've been to SCE's EOC, and for a town our size, it's pretty impressive from the pictures. But I also did want to expressly thank Bob Spears for your contributions to this. I mean, the fact, the fact that you're volunteering your time into this, and I know this is really like the back of your hand, you know this so well. So thank you for volunteering your talents to us. The question I have is, how does, or if, what's the communication or relationship with CERT and the work that they're doing? And, you know, it may not be directly, but I'm hoping there's some kind of interaction there. Someone can answer that.
So CERT would help primarily in training.
We have CERT people here.
Oh, if we want to let CERT give the answer. Okay. So CERT, CERT has two primary roles in the community. One, they hold the trainings for preparedness, so they get people ready if an emergency happens. If Captain Bartlett was here, he would say the, the better people are prepared, the fewer people we have to rescue. So that's their, their primary thing that they do. In the event of an emergency where we're having a declaration, we will coordinate with them. They will assist in search. They won't enter buildings, they won't do that, but they will help us assess the scene and provide information back to us through our EOC Coordinator. Or if, if Bartlett's worked a number of hours, then whoever has stepped in for him in that role. So the, the most critical thing they do is the, the large trainings. We get more people trained here than in much larger cities because we have such a great program. And the, they prepare people to take care of themselves in the times when the government can't immediately respond.
Just a quick question. Don't know if you can answer it. Maybe you'd have to kill me if I, if you answer it. But this is a Department of Homeland Security grant. So does that mean we have to have some counterterrorism component to this, or?
So the, the DHS grant was, was just for training. Everything else currently we've paid out of our own pocket. But there's, whenever you get a grant, there is always a string. That's not the string with this one, but we put a, a computer and camera down there eight years ago, and we get audited every year to make sure the camera is still in place and the computer is still in place. So there's, there's something with every grant.
Okay. Well, again, very impressive. I hope a lot of people were watching this on TV because they should feel really good about our ability to be prepared when a disaster hits, not if, because they do come sooner or later, so. And again, thank you, Mr. Bob Spears. You're, you're amazing and appreciate everything you do for the citizens of Sierra Madre.
I'm not sure why the city clerk isn't making note of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have four items tonight on consent. Item A, Comprehensive Annual Finance Report, the CAF, CAFR, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Item B, Second Reading of Ordinance 1426, amending Title X, Vehicles and Traffic of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Item C, Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 20-11 of the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre Approving Certain Demands. And item D, Consideration of Acceptance of San Gabriel Municipal Water District Grant in the Amount of $1.9 Million for the Sierra Madre slash Arcadia Joint Well Project. And that includes the consent items.
Okay. Any questions on any of the consent items?
No.
Just one quick question. I know the award last year for the CAFR, I don't know when that came out, but do we, have we got any notification of what the, what a great CAFR we had this year?
Not yet, but we recognize that it is a fantastic CAFR, so hopefully we will get that acknowledgement. We did submit, last year we did receive the highest award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the presentation of the CAFR. And we've submitted it again this year, but we haven't been notified yet.
I also just want to, well, before I comment, any other questions? Okay, well, I'll open it up to public comment. Are there any comments on any of the consent calendar items?
Really, I used to like to read off how much the library warrants were, just a suggestion. Was it 2,633.29 for payroll transfer?
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Bring it back, any comments? I have a, I have two comments. Again, just the financials are very impressive. So thank you, Mr. City Manager and Staff. And the other comment I have about the CAFR itself is the beautiful picture on the front of it, which is the, one of our bookmark artists. And I think that is just fabulous. Can you hold that up?
Oh, and I know who this is.
Yeah. Hold that up.
Mayor, you'll note that's the mayor's award, not the city manager's award for the bookmark contest. It's a personal slight.
And she has won many times.
One other comment. Again, this is truly historic, is the $1.9 Million grant for the Sierra Madre-Arcadia Joint Well Project.
I knew you were going to comment on that.
Yeah. And I hope George Maurer is still around and kicking and paying attention because years ago, I mean, he was really on a mission to get the water district to help us out here. And finally, it's come to fruition. So I just want to acknowledge George Maurer's part in this and really kicking that off. And it finally came to fruition. So it's quite a historic event. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now for the action items. Okay. The next thing on the, is discussion for the Annual Housing Element Progress Report.
Mayor, our Associate Planner, Claire Lynn, will give this presentation.
Good evening, mayors and members of the city council. I have a very brief presentation this evening on the Sierra Madre Annual Housing Element Progress Report for the year 2019. Every year by April 1st, California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research require each city to provide a annual report on the status and the progress made in implementing the current housing element cycle. The annual progress report is an important tool to facilitate implementation of communities' housing element and in tracking and monitoring cities' progress in addressing regional housing needs and goals. The report includes the numbers of housing unit permitted by income level, the status of programs in the housing element, and the efforts to remove governmental constraints. So in 2019, our city has permitted 12 accessory dwelling units in the low-income category with building permits. And city received two housing application proposing two new single-family unit with the previous, applications from the previous years, 2019. In total, the city approved five single-family housing unit. With all the approved application, four accessory dwelling unit were construct and final. The above report is for city council to receive and file, and it will be filed with this day as well. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, questions? I have a question. Of our 55 RENA obligations, where are we as we approach the end of that cycle? How many units have we built to comply with our RENA obligation?
I don't think we tabulated that, but we haven't, other than the new construction of accessory dwelling units, we haven't produced any new single-family dwellings as of yet. We have some that are entitled, some of them are part of the Stonegate Development Project, which we can issue building permits until the debris basin is resolved.
Just, yeah, what, how are we doing with that? Is that going to be resolved sometime?
We were hoping that that would have already taken place. There's been some mitigation. They have a, the developer has a contractor, Sappos Environmental, who's, they're taking the lead to move that forward and to try to get the Army Corps of Engineers and the county to accept the debris basin. I'm hoping that that gets done prior to the end of this year, so we can begin issuing permits on the buildings that have already been approved.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, real quick, that was Claire Lynn's first presentation in front of council. And for the record, she's the best. She's been with planning for two years, promoted twice, and I'm glad she got to give this presentation tonight.
Well, thank you. You did a great job. Okay. So that takes care of that. There was a receive and file. Okay, now Housing Element Update.
We have a PowerPoint presentation for you today. And I also wanted to introduce Karen Warner. She is our Housing Element Consultant. She actually worked on the fifth cycle and possibly.
Fourth cycle.
Fourth cycle as well. So it's going to be a two-part presentation. She's going to begin, then I'll look at some of the opportunity sites that staff and our consultant have identified as a kind of a beginning stage for conversation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's nice to be back. I'm going to give, I'm going to abbreviate this presentation somewhat because you've been here for a while. But I'd like to just start out with a little background on Housing Element 101. We're going to focus on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment and potential sites, and then talk about the next steps in the Housing Element Update process. So as, as you're aware, the Housing Element is part of the city's general plan, and the state statutes require local governments to adequately plan to meet existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. Unlike other general plan elements, the Housing Element is required to undergo state review for compliance with the statutes. And the statutes continue to evolve and get longer and longer almost every year. The latest ones I printed out were over nine pages. And there are more and more teeth in terms of complying with those statutes. The Housing Element is required to be updated on a schedule, and the schedule is now an eight-year period. So this upcoming element will be 2021 to 2029. The State Department of Housing and Community Development is the body that's empowered with reviewing housing elements and determining whether they comply with the statutes. Sierra Madre's element is in compliance, which is great, and we are striving to continue that with the update. There are a lot of benefits to having a state-compliant element. There's a presumption of legal validity if a housing element is challenged. And the, the typical litigants in a housing element challenge are affordable housing advocacy groups. Cities can maintain discretionary review over affordable housing projects with an HCD compliant element within the confines of the Housing Accountability Act. The Housing Element compliance is required for eligibility for state housing funds. So the city, for example, just received $160,000 in SB2 planning grants, and Housing Element compliance was a requirement for that. RENA carryover, so if you think your RENA's high, if you don't have a compliant element, the RENA from your prior cycle carries over, so you have a double RENA. So that's quite a big penalty. And then most recently, HCD has authority now to refer non-compliant cities to the Attorney General. And the most recent lawsuit the Attorney General brought was against the City of Huntington Beach for non-compliance. So we do the Housing Element to be in legal compliance, but we also do it to address the community's housing needs. And we've started updating the, the needs assessment. And it's, you know, it's not surprising that there's segments of the community that have a hard time affording to live here. So people who work in town in modest-income jobs, like teachers, nurses, retail and hospitality workers, childcare providers, all have a difficult time affording to live in the community where they work. Special needs households, senior citizens, disabled persons, single-parent households, and children of longtime Sierra Madre residents have a difficult time, you know, moving back into the community in which they were raised. So the RENA, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, and this is really, what triggers the whole update cycle is the Regional Council of Government, in this case SCAG, releasing the Regional Housing Needs Assessment figures. The RENA requirement in the element requires jurisdictions to provide zoning to accommodate their fair share of the region's housing needs. The RENA is not a building quota, but it's a planning target that jurisdictions need to provide the zoning to enable. The, the draft RENA that, the methodology has just been approved by, by SCAG is over three times higher than what it was the last, the prior eight-year cycle. So there's over 1.3 million housing units that are distributed among the SCAG cities. So everyone's RENA is much, much higher than the previous go-around. So the, the draft RENA, as it stands now for Sierra Madre, is for a total of 204 new units. The very low and low-income units would be required to have a minimum 20-unit-an-acre density to, for the sites to qualify as meeting an adequate site for very low and low income. And the moderate income would need a density of about 12 units an acre. So just to compare the fifth-cycle RENA with this preliminary sixth-cycle RENA numbers So just to compare the fifth-cycle RENA with this preliminary sixth-cycle RENA numbers, you can see Sierra Madre's 55 units increased to 204, but many of your neighbors have had similar, if not even more dramatic increases. Looking at South Pasadena, going from 63 to over 2,000 units. And a lot of this has to do with access to transit, and since they have Gold Line Station there. But even San Marino, from 2 to 398. So what we've done, this is a big challenge, and so we've kind of started to go out and we walked the community and looked at potential sites for, and we're just using the 20-unit-an-acre as kind of a baseline density. The city could always decide to go to a higher density, and then you would need fewer sites. But for purposes of this analysis, we've looked at, you know, areas of the city that could potentially redevelop at 20-unit-an-acre densities. And I'm going to let Vincent discuss some of these potential sites.
So I just wanted to point...
May I ask a question first before Ms. Warner? Just, so what we're doing here is, we're really, our main concern is the low and, what is this, two, very-low categories, because that's where we've got to come up with the 20 units per acre, right?
Yes.
So for the moderate, we have enough zoned already for 12 units per acre, don't we?
Well, that's a good question. The other thing that comes into play are your accessory dwelling units. So we will be looking at, particularly since you're, or have you already amended the code?
Yes.
Yeah. We will look at what the past rate of ADU production was and probably increase that slightly because your new ordinance is more favorable to ADUs. And those will go partially towards low and partially towards moderate. We'll have to do a rent survey and see where they fall in.
Okay. Well, if there's no way they can be counted as very-low, the very-low is where we're really having problems, right? I mean, we don't add to the very-low every year when we get the report. We're only taking care of low and moderate, but I don't recall seeing too many very-low.
We would have to impose a rental restriction, and that would have to be through a covenant. The city had attempted this before.
Tried that.
And that requirement was actually omitted from the code to encourage production of ADUs because at one point, there were no applications coming in for a five-year period.
Yeah. So eventually, do we, do we think, I mean, I think we've done pretty good. I don't, that's why I was asking the question before about how many, how much of the RENA obligation we've been able to fulfill. But my impression is that we just haven't done very much on the very-low.
That's correct.
And are we exposing ourselves the next time we go around when we submit this current one, when they look at what we've done in the past that we just aren't able to achieve very-low? Is that going to hurt us when we get our next one approved?
The very-low income is not produced in the market.
Understand.
So it requires subsidy. So you're not alone.
Okay.
And, you know, you, you've met that in the past by your senior housing project was very-low, so that was fantastic.
That's right, yeah.
Your Highland Muse was moderate.
Moderate, yeah.
So achieving those very-low-income units really does require subsidy.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, the conversation on that point is, one, the subsidy is correct. The conversation that the city managers are having on the side is we're worried that because the market doesn't produce them at 20 per acre, that when, that will become 30 per acre, that will, right, that that minimum requirement will be increased until it becomes financially viable without subsidy. So that's not part of this plan. So subsidy would be a preferred way to meet that requirement. Eventually, we feel the constriction, again, will be greater until it becomes financially viable.
Yeah, okay, very scary. Okay, thank you.
So on this particular graphic, I just wanted to point out that the six potential sites identified are still not enough to meet the RENA allocation that we're looking at unless we increase density. So right now, what we are showing is a net gain from the existing units that are already on those parcels of 115 units for a hundred, total of 159 total units. So we would still be, have to go back, look at these sites, look at the potential density if that is necessary to be increased, or we find sites elsewhere. And that's part of the process that we wanted to establish as community outreach and participation as a workshop to help staff also identify additional sites.
So you're going to conduct workshops?
Public workshops, yes, and get feedback not only on these sites and from the property owners, but also and see if they can help us identify other sites as well so we can bring those numbers up. So site number one is located on Mariposa, West Mariposa Avenue. It's actually the site of, there's the library parking lot. We had to identify that. It is a viable site as a vacant parcel. And also, there is a 10-unit apartment building adjacent. That's unlikely to be redeveloped, but there are two additional single-family homes immediately to the east that could yield additional units. So we, even though the 10-unit building would not be included as a redevelopment project, we're still showing the entire block and what that increase would be. In this case, it would be a 10 net new units from what is there existing.
That includes the library lot?
That would include the library lot as well. The library lot alone would account for six of those units. And again, this is not predicated that these are going to be developed sites. This is what we're going to be reporting. And it's a city-owned parcel, a vacant lot. They're going to look closely at items like this.
Okay.
They don't come back at some time in the future and say, hey, you put a library there on that lot here?
No, what will, what they could do is say, well, what about those six units? Now you have to carry those over through the next cycle.
Okay.
Okay, so I think this is appropriate that we ask questions. I hope it's not bothering you at all.
No, no, please.
Because, I mean, this is really hard to understand, and we want to make sure we get this right. But my understanding is if, if we built, use that for the library parking lot, we have to have a reserve because they kind of expect this to happen where...
Right.
And this is what Huntington Beach was sued over, wasn't it? The same thing where they had a high density and then they allowed a different density and they became sued. So, so we, even though you're including this here, it seems to me that we ought to be planning for six additional units in case this gets developed as a parking lot. So we should be planning for the 30% over, I think it's...
Right.
Yeah.
And that's what, we're going to continue to search for additional sites in the city.
Okay, good.
So, Mayor, to that point, when we talk about viable development properties that are vacant city-owned, with everything we have here, as Director Gonzalez said, we're 45 units short already. So not, not designating vacant viable property unless we're doing something with it quite immediately. At some point, it's going to get designated. So the lot behind the library, we think, is going to lead to a lot of discussion. Also, the lot behind Taylor's is going to lead to a lot of discussion, but they're vacant city-owned lots, so the idea that we're reserving them for another use is fine. But the more we don't designate that are viable, it expands further into the neighborhoods.
Now, are we going to run into problems, though? Well, I think we'll know on the library pretty quick before we actually submit our plan here.
Yeah, I think that's correct, Mayor.
Yeah, okay, because I was worried about a situation where we rezone it for R3H, and then we then develop it as a parking lot. That might be problematic, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. I think if, if the library goes forward with the plan they're proposing, this would no longer be a vacant city-owned lot. It would be used as part of the library, and we would have to find, reassign those six somewhere else.
Somewhere else, okay.
And it would get pushed out and, pushed out further.
Okay, good, that's helpful, yeah.
Site number two is located on the northeast corner of South Lima Avenue and West Mariposa Avenue, here adjacent beginning to our city parking lot. And we had looked at this lot before, but it would be, and there's also two existing parcels that were already at 20 dwelling units per acre and identified in our last RENA allocation. But what we're doing is looking for underutilized properties, some of which are present here with duplexes. There are other properties with fourplexes on them and probably would not be identified, or they're identified as part of the overall block, but would not be removed. So if there was a potential development. So basically, out of the total of 48 units that is represented within this block, 23 of them are net new units.
Okay, I have a question about this one, too. I'm confused about the zoning. I thought we designated 271 and 261 as the R3H.
Actually, 261, actually, 271 and 293 are R3H. 261 is still zoned as R2.
Well, how do you, why does it say previous housing element cycle here for 261, 271?
That should be dropped down one cell below.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, 261, there was always debate on this one, but I did speak to the property owner in the past about this and also other staff, and this was, he did not want to have that property, the zoning increase, so he remained at R2. So we would like to try to revisit that and capture that as well.
So does, do the property owners have a right to refuse?
They, in the last cycle, he refused to do so, and I guess staff accommodated that request.
Okay, so we were able to meet our obligation. It's going to be a little tougher this time around.
Yes.
I see, okay.
So site three is the southwest corner of West Mariposa Avenue and South Baldwin Avenue. And it is including the post office site, the parking lot directly behind it, and the vacant lot to the south. And also, we went further south and captured a duplex and a single-family residence. And what this would yield, discounting the duplex and the single-family residence, is 22 units. And overall, there's 25 units would be accounted for on all these properties.
Now, this being Measure V, I mean, I asked a question, and Ms. Warner responded to say that, I, I'm going to, hopefully I understand it correctly, but my understanding is what you put here. This would require a Measure V vote. So when we submit this to HDC, HCD, we would then have to put this to a vote, and if it doesn't fail, we are not in compliance and we have to go back to the drawing board.
That would be true, yes.
So we would have to be very proactive to use this to say, long before we submit the plan, we would want to know whether this passes or not.
I actually went through this in another city, Yorba Linda. Same attorney that wrote your Measure V wrote their Measure B. And they have, citywide, any increase in density requires a vote of the people. So we were on a deadline to submit the element, to adopt the element and submit it to HCD. So the city received a contingent approval letter from HCD pending the vote of the people. And there were 13 sites for upzoning, and it passed, and so, yeah.
They, they were, people were actually rational about what was happening here. That's, that's really heartening to hear.
So I think that would probably be a similar thing. So if you do end up needing to designate certain sites that are within Measure V, you would have a program in the element, the commitment with the timeframe. We had to be very specific on the timeframe and when the vote would happen.
Okay.
And then if the vote fails?
If it fails, then you would go back and identify other sites.
Identify other areas.
Yeah.
In their case, it was really more difficult to say designated the whole city. Is that what you said?
Yeah. Right, right, yeah.
Because you'd have to go back to the voters again, so good, I'm glad for them that they passed.
Yeah.
That's a disaster.
We'll be doing it again this go-around.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So site four is located on the southeast corner of South Baldwin Avenue and Suffolk Avenue. And we've identified a number of properties here. Some of them were recently purchased, such as 80, South Baldwin Avenue. And also, we've had, there's, he has expressed interest of purchasing an adjacent property at 30, southeast, the, at 30 Suffolk Avenue. He also purchased the 18 Suffolk. And then we've had other persons interested in selling their properties. So it's, it's actually becoming a little bit more viable under common ownership to actually do something here. And just looking at some of the other buildings, again, 90 Suffolk is actually developed with 12 units, and that's not assumed to be redeveloped, but some of the other single-family properties in this location are. So looking at the total unit count, out of the total 41 total units, we would have a 27-unit net gain of new units. Site five, southeast corner of East Sierra Madre Boulevard and South Baldwin Avenue. Again, this is within the Measure V. It includes the Taylor's Meats. There are parking lots both to the south and to the east, and also the city parking lot south of the Taylor parking lot. In this case, the total unit count would be 28 units. That's at a density of 20 units per acre. And the final site selection of potential sites, this is 404 North Homosa. It's actually the old north church just across the way. It's a parcel that they own, not behind their green space behind the church. They own another parcel. There's a storage shed on the property. The property is approximately 12,000 square feet. They have a 240-square-foot building under church ownership on the property, built in 1926. And that parcel would yield five units if redeveloped. So the aggregate site capacity of all the sites that we showed is 115 net units, net new units. And the lower-income RENA need is still at 116 dwelling units, at a minimum 20 dwelling units per acre, which is a default for very-low and low-income development. And then we would also have to find other units, either from a 15% up to a 30% buffer, which would respectively be 17 up to 35 additional dwelling units to be able to secure our requirement for low and very-low. So the need for low-income site capacity, overall, looking at 135 to 151 units, we would have to identify as we move forward in this process. Next steps, we are looking for city council input on all of the sites that we selected as we moved forward. We want to provide feedback on the identified sites with the community. That could be in format of a community workshop. If that's the council's desire, certainly we will be outreaching to the property owners and getting their feedback. Eventually, this... Eventually, this will be going, moving forward to the planning commission for their input and consideration. There's always the possibility of a joint study session with the city council and the planning commission to provide direction. And then to develop that report, eventually going back to the planning commission for recommendation to the city council and submitting that document to HCD as a draft for their consideration. And that concludes our presentation.
Questions?
Just a timeline question. By when are we expected to get back our first draft, HCD?
That will be back in twenty twenty-one. Actually, it'll be this, at the, towards the end of this year. But the, the final draft will be effective in twenty twenty-one, if you can respond to that.
It really depends on how long the community input process is. But once we've landed on the sites, then we will incorporate that into a draft element and send it to the state, and then they have sixty days to review the draft. And then we'll see, you know, where we stand on needing to make revisions. And the site, the unit capacities that we've calculated on these sites are generous because the site, in, in the staff report, it discusses this. The, the new requirements on a viable site that the state has are very, very stringent. So it's not as straightforward as identifying, you know, an underutilized site with an older home on it that has capacity for five additional units. There's a lot more criteria, so it's, it's going to be challenging.
So I, and again, I know you said it depends on how long community input is, but there's got to be a drop-dead date of when it needs to be in, so it's in effect.
The deadline is for adoption by October twenty twenty-one.
Adoption October.
Yeah, so we would, in our timeline, we have the draft element going to the state, you know, by the end of this year.
Thanks.
All right, I, I have a question. Have we considered, like, sites on Sierra Madre Boulevard, like, further west, just outside the Measure V zone? I think there's three little parcels there. I think there's just houses on those, I mean, that little...
We can look at those. They might have some potential historic significance, if I'm thinking of the ones that you're referring to, potentially eligible. But certainly, we can look at additional sites down the Boulevard, outside of the Measure V area.
How about, like, I think that one big box that Parks, Park Avenue dead ends into? That one is, I think it's four eighty-nine. It's the Palm Gardens. Where that looks really underutilized. It looks a big area in front of the, in their single-story apartments. I mean, it seems like there's a potential for a lot more density on that site.
We can look at that as well.
Okay, so that's what you're looking for, is just suggestions?
Right, right.
Okay. All right, well, I hope the workshop comes up with a few. I mean, you know, my concern is, I think, you know, with regard to Measure V also, is just my gut feeling is that site number three might pass. I'm really doubtful that people would pass site five. I mean, that's where the Taylor's Market is. That's such a prominent location that they'll just reject it and say, "Go find something else." That just is not a good idea, you know? So we ought to think about that, strategize a little bit as to what we think might fly with the voters. I think it'd be preferable if we can find more sites outside of the Measure V.
That's what we were trying to do, but it was becoming a little bit difficult.
Well, it's difficult, but you still have to face the fact that it might fail anyway, so you might as well just find them and then have it in your back pocket if it doesn't pass. I mean, look, I mean, it's going to be expensive to put it out to the voters anyway. I mean, is, is, is that really a good thing to do? Or should we just find sites? Because we're going to have to have those in our back pocket anyway.
I think we should probably look at other sites to your suggestion. The expense of putting it out to the voters, if we aligned it with the regular election, it wouldn't be, I mean, it'd be a minimal added expense. So that wouldn't be a concern. This go-around, certainly if it failed and we didn't have backup sites and then had to go back out again, then that's a hundred twenty thousand dollar proposition.
Yeah, see, I, I'm just really uncomfortable, but it's good that we're discussing it because, you know, I mean, you need direction here. So that would be my direction, is to find some other sites.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess we just have to, it's going to boil down to ramming this down the throne of the property owner. We've got to come up with enough sites and you might not be able to find enough voluntarily, so, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not an easy process.
And I, and I really, really believe that non-compliance is not an option. We, we really don't want to go down that road, you know? By the way, I'm afraid we might have a Brown Act violation over here, seriously, folks.
This is an open meeting.
Pardon me?
This is an open meeting.
No, but you guys are talking to each other.
Talking about jokes.
Be careful, please. Okay, we'll open it up. Are we ready for opening up to public comment?
Hey, I, you know, I think I've expressed to y'all before that I'm not a fan of this whole rena process. I think it's convoluted and cumbersome and doesn't actually produce affordable housing, which is the whole goal. But nonetheless, it's state law. We have to comply. And as you've seen, that, you know, picking these sites is very difficult. And a lot of these sites are going to be difficult sites because they're Measure V or there's historic houses or whatnot. But there are elements under this that we do control. And I think that we, we want to be careful to do the low-hanging fruit. One of the things that we're required to do in our fifth round housing element is to adopt a commercial code with SRO zoning in it, which are effectively just small studio apartments. And we, the planning commission recommended a zoning code to y'all in July of two thousand eighteen. I know that you've been busy negotiating on, on the monastery and whatnot, but I think we really need to push that along and get that process done because we don't want to go to HCD and say, "Hey, we couldn't do these low-income, the very low-income," because nobody can do very low income, and we're in a boat with everybody else. I think that's a reasonable story, but if they come back to us and say, "Yeah, but here's something that's totally within the city's ballpark and you guys were supposed to adopt this ordinance and you didn't do it." So I really think we want to get that process going and get it completed before we move to our next housing element. So we don't have to, on top of everything else we need to negotiate with HCD, have to deal with that issue as well.
Okay.
Tonight, we heard from the people at the monastery about their plans to develop. And one of the things that came up was that they may be a place for retired priests. And since you have a relationship now with those people, if there could be a set aside for so many units for retired priests in small studio apartments, you would have, you would, it would comply with your rena numbers and would also put a, put people in that location who are not going to be driving a lot, not going to be using city services a lot, and it would be a win-win. They would have a place that they could have. And also, you could claim those for your rena numbers. Just a thought.
Interesting.
Since you are in negotiation and you do have a relationship with them and no lines have been drawn on the, the ground yet, it may be something that you could approach them for.
Okay.
Great idea.
What about the parking on the south side of, of the Boulevard, behind the stores? There's a lot of parking there. Some of it is city-owned, some of it is owned by the, by the, by the stores themselves. And everybody wants parking, of course. Maybe one could think of terms of building a multi-story, beautifully-designed car park, parking structure, so that that would liberate space there for housing.
Good evening. This is Pat Alcorn. I had the, I don't know if it was a privilege or not, but I attended some of the SCAG meetings leading up to our, the first, or our last housing element. And of course, there were complaints from, from a lot of the mayors of the cities, including Monrovia and, and South Pasadena complained about the re- rena numbers then. And the gentleman from Sacramento who was presenting this said, "It is what it is." So we know that we have no choice but to go along. But I would just like, I was hoping that this might have come before our, the monastery presentation because I know that the citizens that were here complaining about the monastery development are definitely going to be complaining about any kind of other large developments in the city, including apartments and that sort of thing. So I'm glad to see that you've already scheduled or put on the calendar some meetings and I hope we have more than, than less of those meetings. Thank you.
Barbara Lee, I'm really rusty and I haven't been concentrating on this so much. Does the city of Sierra Madre, did they ever take in ownership of the parking lots in back of the businesses? In the back of my mind, I just remember that the city never owned the parking lots. And that includes the one up on Montecito and the one back of Howie's and the, you know, the ones in back of the businesses and the ones in back, down the hill from the business. So I'm not sure if those could be counted as a possible building site. And the other, when I got up earlier and mentioned that, I don't like to use the word spot zone, but that one place behind the police station that was moved up to an R three when the rest of the neighborhood's R two. Neighbors weren't happy, but the one, I don't think the neighbor knew what he was doing, but basically, he's sitting on a diamond mine. So when I heard that this ownership is being bought over there on Suffolk's, a couple of properties are being bought up, I'm wondering if maybe they might be thinking, "Okay, they're going to have an increase in zoning." So I don't know if there'll be a bargaining chip there or not. I don't know. It's just off the top of my head. Thanks.
De Alcorn, I just want to respond to one of the things you said there. You said, "At least they were rational in voting for this very, you know, Measure B overriding it." And I think they're irrational in lieu of irrationally going on within the state. You have them saying, "Okay, we have to have all these undocumented people coming in. Guess who needs low-cost housing?" Well, we can have, I mean, I could go on about this, but the rationality is not within the populace, it's within the state. You get this AB coming up, they come up with all these good ideas and it's just counterproductive. And I, irrationality, I'm sorry, is not within the populace, it's within legislature.
Well, I'll just comment that we're here to control what we can control.
I understand that. I just...
Right.
It just...
I understand, yeah. Mr. City Manager, you can respond to any other questions?
We have the commercial code scheduled for the next meeting on the twenty-fourth. The planning commission made a recommendation. It came before council. Council provided different directions, so the, that will be back before council for consideration based, based on that direction. I think the other questions were more, were more comments. I think that we do need to look at all the areas. I'm not sure if the parking lots that were mentioned by two speakers are in or out of Measure V, but that would certainly play a role in that to look at. I do know we own parking lots that are outside of Measure V, but if you remove some parking and then you add a dense development of multifamily in a commercial area, you, you could also exacerbate a problem of not enough parking. So I think, based on the discussion tonight, it's clear we need to find additional areas in excess of, of what we found, also in excess for the buffer, also in excess for the Measure V areas that may not pass. So the likelihood of the next plan coming back of having identified sites that are expanded into more of neighborhood settings, I, I think, is increased quite dramatically with the direction we're receiving tonight.
Yeah, okay. The parking lots are, by the way, in, according to the map, in Measure V. Okay, great presentation. It really helps me to kind of understand what we're up against here, so I appreciate it very much. And it is a little disconcerting how restrictive the state is going to be and some other comments were made, just like, "If you think this is bad, wait to the next cycle." So definitely, we don't want to, we want to be compliant and not have this carry forward any further, so. Okay, well, I appreciate very much. And any other comments? I think staff has direction here. Okay, all right, so next on the calendar is city clerk discussion.
This will be our deputy city attorney leading the discussion, ma'am.
All right, thank you, council. We've submitted a staff report. It has most of the information. But just a quick update on what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it. So under the government code, the government of a general law city has the following officers, must have the following officers: a city council, a city clerk, a city treasurer, a chief of police, and a fire chief. A city attorney is not on that list, so you technically don't need me. And, and of those named, the default under the government code for a general law city is that the city council must be elected, the city clerk must be elected, and the city treasurer must be elected. Now, that was the default, and that default was created in nineteen fifties. Since then, we've had the Public Records Act, the Brown Act, the Political Reform Act, document retention, state standards. So there's been a lot of changes and it's become increasingly difficult. It's, it's become an increasingly more technical position, the position of the city clerk. And so, according to legal cities, about sixty percent of cities have transitioned from elected city clerks to appointed city clerks. We think it might be in the best interest of the city to make that transition as well. To do so, they, the city would have to adopt, the city council would have to adopt a resolution placing on the ballot for November, an ordinance making that change. So that's for your consideration today.
Okay, questions?
The question I have is that this is primarily a matter of technical need, right? The, the training level and the sophistication is such that this has to be a professional. Is that pretty much where you're, you're advocating?
And council member Goss, the requirements that the deputy city attorney just laid out, the different laws and regulations that cities have to comply with, makes having a city clerk a, a full-time job. It's a professional position. So having an elected city clerk that is not a full-time employee is unable to complete all the functions of the office that it requires. So we have a fantastic city clerk right now in Sue Spears. Behind her, we have an assistant city clerk in Laura Aguilar, who spends probably seventy hours a week doing city, city clerk work. And it's very technical. She's at trainings all week this week that are going nine hours a day, and that's very common. The primary role of the elected city clerk in Sierra Madre has been overseeing elections. It's very important to the government, as well as the population, that, the residents, that the elections were free and fair and overseen by an independent authority. The state, which appears to be the theme of the night, has required us to consolidate elections, and we've done that. So we are now on the county schedule and the city no longer operates its own elections. And I think that was the genesis of this conversation in addition to all of the new legal requirements that have been adopted since the city started electing a clerk.
Okay, other questions?
No question.
Okay, we'll open it up for a public comment.
Hi, Barbara Lee. I'm a little confused because I know with Nancy Scholenberger, it was made quite a big deal that she was being paid too much money for the job that she was holding. And I think it's like, you know, she'd have to supply the list of what she did, along with making sure adjudicated notices are printed in the paper and records are kept and so on. are kept, and so on and so on. But I remember the argument for dismissing that position was it was costing the city too much money. But now, you're here tonight saying that you want to make it a full-time position? I'm kind of confused as to what transpired in just maybe, what, two years' time, or a year and a half's time, or something? So, maybe it could be brought out and explained a little clearer on what exactly it is that the council is putting forth. And maybe, I know the position has to be opened up across the city, because that's what happened the last time. There was a few people running, the best qualified, you know, should be sitting in the seat. But I'm just confused as to why one position was eliminated for cost savings, you know, like even the tree commission and different things. Now, we've got weed abatement, all that goes under the fire department. So, a lot of things were eliminated, but now they seem to be coming back. Thanks.
Mayor, would you like me to address that? So, we've always had...
Does anybody else want to comment first? I'm sorry.
I just have a question, that what if it goes on the ballot and it doesn't pass? The term for the city clerk was coming up in November, so if it doesn't pass, we wouldn't have a city clerk?
That one's easy to answer, but go ahead.
So, this would be on the ballot if council chooses simultaneously with the opportunity for people to file to run for city clerk. So, if this measure failed, anyone, the leading vote getter elected by the residents would then become city clerk. And if no one filed, I think, I think we've only had multiple filings for city clerk, I think, once in the past nine elections.
Yeah.
So, there's also the possibility, if it fails, that council would be appointing a city clerk again, as they're able to do under the code. With the conversation from the previous commenter, I think, so since I've been here, we've always had a full-paid, appointed person doing the clerk position. The conversation about the money or costing too much, I think, was not for the elected position, which is $3,000 a year. There was a conversation, not with city clerk Scholenberger, but with city clerk Correa about receiving an additional stipend to oversee elections on top of her stipend for the city clerk position. So Nancy had run, I'm sorry, city clerk Scholenberger had run eight elections and had it down to a science, and the stipend was seen as a good investment. When city clerk Correa was here, if I recall the conversation correctly, this would have been her first election. We had to hire additional consultants to bring in to operate the election. So, council at that time felt the additional stipend wasn't warranted, but it had nothing to do with the pay provision for an elected official.
Can I just add on to that? Just, you know, I think it's important to remember the chronology of how it all happened, is after Melinda Correa was elected to the city clerk position, there were discussions about stipends, but then at that point, she had resigned. So, it was a resignation, and then an appointment for city clerk Spears. So, that was the order of it. It wasn't eliminating the position due to cost, but cost was part of the conversation when city clerk Correa was here regarding some of the additional, not additional responsibilities, but responsibilities regarding the election. So, the cost issue was specific to that, and not, we didn't eliminate that position due to costs.
Okay, bring it back for discussion.
I think you can go as a...
You are, you are.
Public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sue Spears. I am the current appointed city clerk for the city of Sierra Madre. And to answer the question about currently, my duties are purely ceremonial. My only function as city clerk for the city of Sierra Madre is I come to the city council meetings and I write the minutes. All of the other legal requirements with Brown Act, with Public Records Act, with keeping all of the records, the things we have to do about conflict of interest, Brown Act, all of that is done by a paid employee by the city of Sierra Madre. That goes through extensive training. I don't have that training. I don't think anybody, as an appointed person or elected, is going to have, come in to be able to serve the city that way. So, I support this proposal by staff, and I think it's appropriate, and I think the city would be better served to have it so that all of the legal requirements and the city doesn't find itself in, because it's so technical now with elections and everything, that it could potentially cause the city greater harm. And I'm not doing the position for the $3,000 stipend. I don't consider this recommendation as a comment on my service as city clerk right now. So, it's not like my feelings are hurt. I really do support this proposition by the city staff.
Thank you. Okay, bring it back to council for discussion, comments?
I think it makes sense. I mean, I think the requirements under the law just keep getting more and more cumbersome and more complicated, and everything we're doing at the city level. And it's not a surprise to me at all that this kind of level of professionalism is necessary, so, yeah. I'll support it.
So, I received a few emails from residents with a concern of us, at least wanted to share their opinions regarding this issue. And I think a lot of it was with the misconception, again, that this was a cost-saving measure, and also with the fact that elections, we needed a third party for elections and someone else to handle it, aside from city staff. So, given those two, you know, again, this is not about a cost-saving measure. It's not about a $3,000 annually. But when you're looking at elections and who handles it, because we are now required to consolidate with the state, this is, all of our elections are handled by the county now. And I did want to take a look and see where we are in relation to the rest of the state, and hearing the transition of, I think you said, 60% of those that were formerly elected are now appointed. As of March, I think, 6, 2019, out of 493 cities in California, 101 still have elected positions, which is about 20%. And that doesn't include, like, the South Pasadena's that just approved that also. So, given all of that, you know, I'm definitely in support of this. This is definitely not a slight on our past city clerk. And again, I think it's just that the requirements and demands for this position now have changed, and so I'm in favor of moving this to an appointed position.
I just want to say that things have been going really well since you've been on, serving as city clerk. And I would really like to keep things exactly the way they are, as most people in Sierra Madre don't want anything to change ever. But it really, I just, I just don't think we can count on having somebody like Sue to be our so-called ceremonial city clerk. We have to think about the time when she's not here, and we have to go through this process and appoint somebody again, and is it really worth it? So, I think it's always good policy to design your positions, you know, not around the incumbent who's here, because I think it'd be great if you stay another 20 or 30 years. Okay, but I think this just makes sense. It's good governance, is what it is. And so, I'm absolutely in support of it, but I wish we could manipulate things to keep Sue around longer, but she understands. I mean, you know, we just can't do this, because we just like the people that are in the position. And she is, it's not just a matter of liking her. She does a fabulous job. I think I speak for my colleagues on that.
You do.
So, so let's just do the right thing as far, because that's what our job is, is to, you know, is governance here. And we just have to do what's right for the long-term health of the city, so I'm absolutely in favor of it. And I guess some details here. The question would be whether we would have the city clerk report to the council, as does the city manager and the city attorney, or we'd have the city clerk appoint to this, report to the city manager, because you can see, that's all over the place, too. But most of them report, or we have an appointed city clerk, reports to the city manager. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I'm actually in favor of that, because, again, the demands are very technical, and I don't want to have to be trying to evaluate the performance of the city clerk. It's better to have our council-manager relationship, where we hire the city manager, and we hold him accountable for everything that he's responsible for, which would be, including the performance of the city clerk and following the laws and doing what's necessary. So, I'm in favor of that. Do we need to, I think it's important that we give you direction, so when you come back?
Yes, Mayor, with that, what you'll see is staff will come back when it's time to adopt a resolution to put this on the council, or the election ballot in November. So, we'll take the direction you've given us tonight, and we'll incorporate that language in, and that'll be the next discussion, where council will be able to fine-tune everything, and then it'll go on the ballot.
So, do we need to give you direction on whether it reports to the council or city manager at this time?
Unless I hear opposition to what you've just said from your colleagues, then I would take that as direction.
Want to hear?
Oh, I don't oppose. I, you know, I believe in the form of the city manager being the lead, like the CEO, reporting to the board or to the council, so I'm in support of that.
Yeah, okay. So, there you have it. You have direction. And again, Madam City Clerk, thank you for all you do. And I do want to compliment Laura Aguilar, who is our, you know, assistant city clerk, but really handling all the legal-type functions. She does a fabulous job as well. So, everything's going real good, but I think we're taking the right action here. Okay? Okay, with that, I think we're done. Do we have any items for future council meetings?
Me. Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Have you gone until 10:30? A long...